Good morning. It is March 12th. We're here for our regular scheduled county commissioner meeting. We have a full slate of commissioners. We have our administrator, our attorney, and our clerk of the board. At this time, I'll call the meeting to order and ask everybody to please rise and join in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the right of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. So with that, I just want to make sure, is everybody, can we hear, because I don't know if the mics are working that great. Are they working? Okay. Can we turn them up just a little bit? Because I don't hear them that well. So with that, I would like somebody to adopt the agenda as presented.
Mr. Chairman, I would, can you hear me? Doesn't appear that my mic is on.
That's what I thought. Testing. There we go.
Check one, two. There we go. Mr. Chairman, I would like to see us pull items number two and three from the consent agenda. I don't believe they're quite ready to be addressed yet. So with that, I would move for approval of the agenda as presented, with the exception of pulling items number two and three from the consent.
There's been a motion and a second discussion, and I'd like to open this discussion by just saying that there are a lot of things on this consent agenda that I have concerns about. I'd like to discuss, and I will pull them for discussion, items one and seven. But in regards to the agenda, I would just like to know, how are these items getting on the agenda, and how can we have better control of this? I guess I will be asking our new administrator that's only been here for a week and a half or two weeks.
Hot seat. Here you go.
So, hot seat. Here we go.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman and commissioners and folks here today. I, we have what's called a software program called Civic Clerk, and it's an incredible tool. It's really helpful. It makes our lives easier. But sometimes it can be made too easy. And one of the things that I found when I arrived here is that we have a very open agenda, meaning that anybody, not anybody, a great deal of folks throughout the county have access to being able to put things on your agenda. And so I have a fix for it that I would recommend that I think would prevent that from happening, but would also facilitate business in a timely manner. And that would be that when folks want to be on the agenda, they simply submit to me an agenda summary request, and then I can find the slot to put them in, and based on whether it's timely, the level of importance. But, and more importantly, I think than that, it'll give me the ability to brief you gentlemen, so that you have an understanding, a full understanding of what you're looking at on the agenda. Now, a lot of things, I'll just say consent items are typically items that you're approving that you'll have less of an understanding on, because a lot of the times, it's transferring of funds. It's a, it's an elected official asking to do a repayment here or there. I've talked to actually Jeff about that. Our minutes could go, actually, in the consent agenda because you're consenting to what had been done. But it's not going to be as full-fettered as you, as it were, if it were a workshop, you're not going to have that discussion. So because of that, I really believe if the commissioners want to get firm grasp of their agenda back, we switch that one little step in the process. Folks send me over an agenda summary request. We'll get them on when we can in a timely fashion so that it makes sense for them and the board.
So can we, I guess it would, do we just need a consensus of the commissioners to do that, or do we need a resolution? And do we need to add, if the commissioners agree with this, do we need to add that to the agenda today so that it starts immediately?
It's, it's up to you all, of course, as to what you want to do with it. It's my advice to you that I would start it immediately, because I think that the quicker you get it, the quicker you get control of the agenda. It's also easier to, communication-wise, discuss it with folks. And as far as what needs to be done, I think it's just a policy. I don't know that you need a resolution at all. I think it would just be a policy, but I-
So I defer to my legal here. Do, can we do it by consensus if it's a policy issue, or we have to pass it?
You can do it informally. There's no real set statutory method for setting an agenda. And it's always been kind of a curious thing, the agenda, because, you know, the board sets the agenda, but under the Open Public Meetings Act, you have to do it in an open public meeting, which always sort of begs the question, well, how does it get, you know, to the meeting in the first instance if you can't talk about it before the meeting? So you'll see with a lot of boards, what they do is they, is they put a mechanism in their bylaws, Benton County being an example. So you certainly can put it in your bylaws through resolution, but you don't have to. So I think a quick fix, as Brian is suggesting, or Mr. Danzel, sorry, I'm being a little informal here, is suggesting would be certainly okay to do today, just to give him the directive to do that is fine.
So commissioners, do we have consensus on this?
I'm, I agree with that, with Brian's explanation, as long as the chair has the right to authorize everything before it comes to the meeting.
Mr. Danzel.
Yes. Thank you, Commissioner Mullin. So I would like to back up. The Board of Commissioners always has the right. So this would, if you gentlemen want to bring anything to the agenda, that's your elected right as a county commissioner to do so, and chairman, of course. This would be for folks that are outside of your office trying to be placed on the agenda. But of course, the Board of Commissioners is the first authority on what goes on the agenda completely.
Thank you. I, I agree. Sometimes stuff gets to the agenda, and it gets there last minute, and we don't even have time to, to review it. And it's caused, it's caused a little bit of frustration on people's part sometimes, and I think this provides a more streamlined process, so I'm in favor of it.
So we have consensus for that, and we have a motion and a second for the approval of the agenda. So with that, all in favor say aye?
So clarification. So we were pulling items two and three, or are we pulling also one and seven?
Yeah, we're pulling items two and three, but when we go to approve the consent, I'm going to go for discussion on a couple of them also. We haven't went for that motion yet. We're just approving the agenda right now.
Okay.
So we're pulling items two and three. That was the motion. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Move down to approval of minutes. Everybody had a chance to review. And, and again, I think the minutes is another item that could be put on the consent agenda, so we don't have to go through this process of approving them every time by consent.
Agreed.
Okay. So that will now be moved to a consent item. Approval of warrants and registers, payroll rosters.
So we have two fund expenditures this morning. Move for approval of fund expenditures in a total amount of $344,714.88, as presented, and note that it has been reviewed and signed by two representatives of the auditor's office and the county administrator.
Second.
Made a motion and a second. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Second fund expenditure, move for approval of fund expenditures in a total amount of $276,632.92, as presented, and note that it has been reviewed and signed by two representatives of the auditor's office and the county administrator.
Second.
Made a motion and a second. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Takes us down to public comment. Is there anybody in the room for public comment?
Commissioners, a part of accreditation for the Franklin County Sheriff's Office, both in the jail and in the law enforcement section, there's a requirement in order to stay accredited that we have to have a budgeting policy, and then we also have to quarterly, annually, and close out our budgets. So in 2024, we had a $17 million or so budget for both sides of the House. Between revenues, cost-saving measures, et cetera, et cetera, we are, we have returned $1.4 million back, basically, to the general budget or back to the county. And as I stated, this is about making sure that we stay in compliance with accreditation and with the state. So that's what the memorandum is. It will also be posted publicly as part of the accreditation process.
Thank you. Anybody else for public comment?
Hello, commissioners. My name is Glenn Stockwell. I'm chairman of Washington State Economic Development. I see you've added Brian over here, and he used to work directly with the president. I think what I'm, I gave you a handout here. I've been doing this now since 1986, promoting completion of the Columbia Basin Project. Did it when you and I ran for Congress together. I never changed my story. But anyway, the, the president is looking for projects, and what I'm promoting is the first national bipartisan project of his administration. The Columbia Basin Project has given returns for 75 years, and they've been positive returns. So I think that what I've promoted here is that we need to get together with the Republican Party and move forward instead of talking about it, and ask Brian and yourselves to make an appointment with President Trump and ask him to make this project his first bipartisan project of his administration. And he's a doer instead of a talker. I've noticed ever since I was young, our society used to be strong on doing, but now we've become long on lip. And so I think you have an opportunity if you would help lead the state on this. Yeah, I think you have the final piece here with Brian over here, because he has had direct contact, and he was a part of the Agriculture Department also. So I hope that you would, I'd make a motion for you to move forward on this, if you would. And good Lord willing, it'll take place.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else in the room for public comment?
Gentlemen, thank you for clarifying the software that interacts with your open meeting and agenda issues. I think it would be a good time for the public to hear when the deadlines are and what things have to go to the clerk. She also coordinates information flowing to our Board of Commissioners, and I would ask you to state that clearly at this time, so we have that in case there's a change.
Mr. Danzel, it's 24 hours before the meeting, correct?
Correct. And nothing would change there. And then for the folks that are wanting to be put on the agenda, and from either the public or from inside the county government, it would just, everything would remain the same. You just would send the summary to me so that I could know what it was, how important it was, and we would just be able to manage it, rather than, my fear is, frankly, that we're just going to come out every single meeting and pull like five things off of the consent agenda. And so I think that we can get ahead of it, and it'll give me the time, really, to brief you gentlemen, so that you'll know exactly what we were looking at. And then I think it becomes so seamless that it'll be an afterthought. But none of the, no changes to when you have to get stuff to us or the deadlines. Thank you.
All right. Is there anybody else for public comment in the room? Is there anybody on the phone lines?
No.
Okay. All right. With that, we'll move down to the approval of the consent agenda, items one, four through nine.
Mr. Chairman, I would move for approval of the consent agenda items one and four through nine, as presented.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second for the approval of the consent items one, four through nine, and I would like to have discussion on number one and number seven. Number one being, and this is why I'm glad we're getting this sort of cleared up, is authorization of extension of inter-fund loan repayment from the 2023 Franklin County Reserve Funds Miscellaneous Fund 100 to the 2023 County Road Fund. Now, the way I understand that, the miscellaneous fund isn't, I thought that was out of our reserve fund. It wasn't, Mr. Erdman? It was out of the miscellaneous fund? And why the delay? Because, you know, we, we loaned it to you, you're coming back with the money to that fund?
This is not a budget-related issue. It's a cash flow issue.
Okay.
As County Road Works, we have to spend our money before we are reimbursed from various grants problems. We're currently finishing up construction on a bridge, and this is where past levy shifts show their, we've eroded our carryover in cash flow over the years because we've had a levy shift for, I think, you know, nine out of the 10 years. So that, we've just gotten on the carryover. We're getting short. We've, originally, I think we, first time we did this, we took $2 million. We cut it down to a million. Now we're down to a half. We're looking to hopefully get this paid off before the end of second quarter. It might take us a full year. We like to keep a little cash reserve. If we don't, if things don't get reimbursed in a timely manner, and sometimes that happens, then that can leave us in a spot where we're not paying vendors.
And I just want to be clear, Mr. Erdman, I, I sort of know what's going on, but I think in order for the public for open and transparency-
Absolutely.
I, I want this to be explained, and you did it well. I really appreciate it. So this is why the delay. And, you know, everybody's looking at our funds and one, why they're dwindling down to nothing. And this is how we help our road department get their projects completed, started and completed, and then we get reimbursed for it.
Right.
So thank you for the explanation. And I, and I appreciate the other commissioners not shifting any money from the road fund this year, a first, and we need to stop it.
We're most appreciated of it, and hopefully that will show, as we move forward into next year, that, you know, we're more solvent. I mean, we're not unsolvent, but that we're more capable of dealing with our internal cash flow and things like that, depending on how things work out. And we don't know, you know, gas tax and property tax are, we get what we get.
And I, and I'd just like to say that we, we're sitting here, we're talking about this, but as a commissioner, the first thing I learned at WASAC was the two most important rules for a commissioner is roads and law enforcement. And our roads is our lifeline for our products to get out of the basin, which is a heavy agricultural area. So-
It is.
I think we need to keep the monies in the road department. So thank you, Mr. Erdman, for that clarification. Moving down to number seven, 2024 inter-budget transfer, $30,000 from current expense reserve fund balance. This, this, I circled this because it, I'm wondering, 2024 is a closed-out year. How do we transfer money on a closed-out year? This is sort of a little bit of a-
Well, now we're kind of getting out of my-
Expertise. Yeah, I don't think this-
Expertise. I can, I explain, you know, what the circumstances were that brought it about.
Okay.
You know, due to the overturn that we've had in, in the building and planning, our planning and building department, and staff shortages that forced us to contract out services to a consultant-
Mm-hmm.
-which put some extra burden on, on current expense, and, and got their balance, you know, in a, in a critical spot on the expenditure side. So that's the reason for the transfers to make that, that they, they didn't over expend. But these were unforeseen circumstances. We didn't expect to lose, you know, half of our planning and building department, and that forced us to, to make some expenditures outside the, Wes can probably speak better to that than I can.
I don't know if Wes wants to, because he's newly hired too, and he's on the hot seat, so.
If he's satisfied with my explanation, I'm, you know, that-
It explains it, and I think the public deserves the explanation, so thank you. That's, that was, I just wanted it out there, so everybody, it's open and transparent for the public to hear.
Absolutely.
So thank you.
We like being open and transparent.
All right. Okay. So, Mr. Danzel, did you want to add anything to that number seven?
Nope. I think that was well explained. The, part of the, sometimes what you'll have also, it might be worth a call to the auditor's office, because they'll need to go back and correct financial statements so that they're reflected correctly, so that for, you know, historical data purposes, we can go back and look and know in each line item exactly what was spent. So I'm guessing there's a little bit of that play, too.
All right. So with that, I'll, there's been a motion and a second for the approval of the consent items number one, four through nine. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Moves us down to regular business items. Ordinance 01, 2025, ordinance creating property management policy. Mr. Briggs.
And good morning again, board, chair. This is actually on for a public hearing, so that would mean that the public is free to comment, and the board is also free to interact. So we can take questions and interact with, with the public during the hearings. I don't know if the chair wants to open the public hearing at this time.
Well, it's, it's an ordinance, so it didn't say an open, a public hearing. So I, at this time, I will open the open public hearing on ordinance 01, 2025. So that way, if anybody from the public wants to comment, they're free and will to, but after our discussion.
Sure, sure. I'll, I'll kick things off here with, just sort of noting the changes from the last workshop. I believe we, we held three workshops on this. Sorry, I didn't annotate all the dates of the workshops that were held here, but very minor changes. So in section 240, 050, I added two words. I added the words "or with" so that it would read any property, where is it? It was leased, owned or leased by or with the county. Essentially, the board wanted an inventory of property, not only owned and leased, you know, from the county, but also leased by the county, by the, you know, by our property manager. So we had a full inventory of everything, not only that we owned, but that we were leasing from a third party. So I, I think that language makes it clear, you know, the added language there. The other thing was, we wanted to make it clear that we were able to carry forward any sort of purchase and sale agreement with a third party. I know there, there was some language in, in the prior version of this that, that talked about the terms of the sale that, that may have permitted that arguably. So I just made it abundantly clear in the language I added in 240, 100, paragraph three, added language in there that specifies that we're able to do retail installment agreements or installment contracts. Let me see if I can pull the exact language I put in there. Sorry, I'm clicking between-
That would, that would in, in, in essence, enable the county to carry the contract on the sale of a piece of property, correct?
Right. So I said, "A negotiated sale, in addition to any other terms which may be mutually agreeable to the parties, may include," and provision, that's not very good language, is it? "A, I, I should have said a provision by which the seller agrees to pay the purchase price plus interest in installments over a set period of time." I would note, now that I noticed, there's a little error there. That at the top, I allow us to correct any scrivener's errors, any spelling or grammar errors. That's real common when you're codifying statutes or codes to uncover grammar and spelling errors. So you want to have that freedom. If it doesn't change the code substantively for whoever, whether it be co-publishing or even a county employee who's doing that, to have that freedom to correct those errors.
Yes, I agree. So you have that at the top. And on the lease part of it, it's also the ability for us to lease the property to an individual if we so choose instead of selling it, correct?
Right.
Yes.
Right.
Okay. Any other questions?
Other questions?
So at this time, I'll open it up to the public for comment. Is there anybody from the public that want to comment on this? Is there anybody on the phone? So at this time, if there's no further discussion, Commissioner Ballin?
I just wanted to commend Mr. Briggs for the efforts that he went through on this. This is substantially different than our first draft, and I think that this is a fine document. It gives us opportunity, and we've been approached a number of times as a county about property that is owned by the county. And, and previous to this, the opportunities were very narrow to what our abilities were. And so I think this is a great document, and thankful that we got to this point. Thank you, Mr. Briggs, and look forward to passing it today.
Well, thank you, and I want to thank Mr. Danzel and Teresa for helping me get it over the finish line. Obviously, Eric was a tremendous help as well along the way, so.
Yes, thank you. Eric was instrumental, and I want to thank these individuals here in the room, too, Mr. Danzel and Teresa. Thank you. So with that, and seeing no public coming forward for comment, I will close the open public meeting and entertain a motion.
Move to approve ordinance 01-025, as presented.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second to pass ordinance 012025. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. County and administrator updates. Mr. Danzel.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. It's been a busy couple of weeks. One of the things that I was most proud to do was Teresa had taken me around, and I met a lion's share of folks at- that actually work here at the courthouse campus and, uh, got to introduce myself and meet them and to thank them for their very many years of service in a lot of cases. And it also, um, was really rewarding and redeeming for me because I got to see how many just great people are here at the county. And I let them know that I have an open door policy, and I don't mind saying that here too, that if there's something that they don't think is going right, I want to know about it because I want to fix it if we can. So I thought that was incredible, and it was a really, uh, for probably more beneficial by far for me than it ever would be for those folks. But if I haven't gotten to you yet, I'm gonna. I can't wait. So that was number one. I had a great, uh, meeting with, uh, Mike McCall out at Happo. I have a way better understanding of what that all means. I was also trained on, uh, going in and being able to take a look in invoice and and approve all the spending and stuff that's going on out there. So those are just kind of things that the new guy coming is going to have to learn because it's a different process than I'm used to. I was able to go on a jail tour with the sheriff and commander Harmon yesterday. Um, that was pretty neat. I haven't been in a, and I've tried to stay out of jail, you know, for the most part. I haven't been in a jail to tour it in a long time, and it was, uh, it was good to see and, uh, and actually see physically what was going on. Um, and then you will be receiving this. I, uh, put together a confidentiality form for, uh, folks in our office, and I was going to send that on over to you, get your take on it, maybe workshop it if we have to. I don't think we will. But there's a lot of policy, I think, that, uh, needs to be looked at and that we can, uh, kind of tighten things up. And it'll make things better because the more control that you have in place, I think really the better you are and the less of, you know, just adding things to the agenda and just kind of a free-for-all. That's where you get into a little bit of trouble because then people are making decisions without the most pertinent and the best available information, and you're kind of operating off your back foot. And so if there's anything I can do in those regards to prepare you or to prepare the county better, I would love to know what that is, and I look forward to getting to know each, uh, each and every one of you and each and every one of the folks that are here in the government and outside to best facilitate government here.
Thank you. Commissioner Bowman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, several meetings last week, Columbia River Caucus, Columbia River County's caucus meeting. Was a Zoom meeting that lasted several hours, just about all of the the counties that touch the Columbia River and, uh, the concerns that we have, uh, mutually there. Legislative Steering Committee Roundtable. Um, I really appreciate the format of of that meeting, which is was last Wednesday evening. Um, after the commissioners meeting last week, I left and and headed over to to Olympia, and that was held in the Washington Association of Counties, uh, office there. And it was, it was a couple dozen commissioners, um, and kind of one at a time, shared some of the challenges they individually have, and then it was other commissioners sharing, um, ideas and and insight into how to address those. And, uh, for being a new county commissioner, really, really appreciated some of the of the experience in that room. And, uh, just some of the challenges that that we face. We have a, one of the most diverse states in the United States. We have rainforest to desert and everything in between. And, uh, one of the counties is, uh, had is having a problem with a a road sliding down the side of a mountain and and sliding into the ocean. And, uh, we don't have that here. And so it's just really interesting to hear the challenges that others face. So I really appreciate the, everybody and their their ideas there. The following day, had a Legislative Steering Committee, uh, County's Priority Meeting. And so, um, I provided you with this, and for the public, this is the twenty twenty five, twenty six county legislative priorities. And it's just a snapshot of of what those priorities are and some of the bills that are attached with those concerns. Fiscal sustainability, public defense reform, improving behavioral health, uh, county housing strategies, county transportation system viability, um, support for rural county coroners, uh, clean energy project benefits. Just to kind of give you an idea of of a challenge that others face that we do not. The legislature passed a bill that would require a a, um, county to have an independent elected coroner. And so when you have a county that that has less than forty thousand people, it's very difficult to to for them to justify or to pay an independently elected coroner. So just that's just a a unique thing. We have more than twice that, approaching three times that number, and and, uh, just their tax base can't can't support it and just some of the challenges involved in that. So also, the Legislative Steering Committee was was, um, presented with an issue paper on housing and homelessness. And after some robust discussion, um, that issue paper was adopted by the Washington State Association of Counties unanimously. And so that was, um, just, uh, it's really good to to hear the the broad spectrum of ideas on the challenges. Had a meeting with our billing and planning and Wes last week and, uh, somebody that's that's interested in in bringing some some, uh, some, uh, business to Franklin County. Um, multiple meetings with our new administrator, Mr. Denzel, and, uh, thank you for that. And, uh, enjoyed having Eric while he was here and think that you're making, doing an amazing job of making that a seamless transition and really appreciate your your effort and time. And and, uh, the other morning I was working early and and, uh, had texted you, and you were right back. And so we proceeded to have a impromptu meeting over the phone, uh, for a while. And that's just really helpful. Thank you for your availability there. And, uh, wanted to just say again, I know we've said this before, but Mr. Erdman, thank you for your hard work and service to Franklin County. You've been wearing multiple hats, and I'm excited that we have Mr. McCart in here to help you. And so, um, thank you for for all that you do for Franklin County and and, uh, for wearing those multiple hats. And and, uh, um, along with that, um, as the chair said, our duties as commissioners is primarily two roles. That is roads and public safety. And so I have, uh, asked Mr. Erdman if there's a way that I can be helpful. And so we've discussed a number of ideas, and one of those is can we procure some of the the number one product we need for roads is rock? And is there a way that we can go and look at that on a little bit more of a bulk scale? And so have asked him if I can be helpful in that. And so we've, um, kind of started working on that a little bit. Is there a way for us to go and and, uh, address that on a on a little bit more of a bulk, a bulk level? And so, um, yeah, look forward to continuing down that path. And, uh, Mr. Chairman, that's my report.
Commissioner Moore.
So yes, last week I attended the Columbia River Counties Caucus, uh, by Zoom, same as Mr. Bowman. Also did some more research into the Health Department and the new septic tank installation codes. And that is going to change April first of this year is that, um, you will have to have the septic inspected upon any land sale. Right now, it's just for the the, um, protection of the buyer. But as of January twenty twenty seven, if that property does not pass, then the land transfer will not happen until that is brought up to code. And some of the, some of the differences in the code, um, have to do with the drain, drain field. Each, um, line off of the drain field will have to have an inspection port. Uh, the depths of the drain field are also going to be affected. But anyways, just wanted to clarify that, that, um, those changes need to be, um, thought out ahead of time if, uh, for any land transfers after January of twenty twenty seven, that, um, the septic system has to be up and functioning properly or there's going to be difficulty in transferring your title. So. And that concludes. And then I just want to mention too that next week on, um, the thirteenth, two P M. is the Benton Franklin Health Advisory Committee, if anybody's interested in that. So that concludes my report.
Thank you. So along the septic system, it sounds to me as if they're putting the burden on the land seller to put in a new septic system. And therefore, if the buyer doesn't like the location of it, what's going to that going to involve? I mean, you're you're.
If the funk, if the system is functioning properly, then there shouldn't be any issues. But if it's not, at that point, it will have to be updated, is my understanding.
Okay. And then on, uh, Commissioner Bowman's report, uh, I have already been working with Craig, and I've, uh, I've hoping that he has been in contact with the Bureau of Reclamation because they are crushing rock up at Mesa. And I ask if we could get in on that and have rock available at that location. And he said yes, and he's working with them on that. So that's that's a. And as far as, uh, maybe a roadway sliding off the hill, we had a hill slide onto a roadway, and they had to close it. So I mean, we have our problems with that too, and it's due to the saturation of the soil with the irrigation system. It's right up there at Basin City, and it it sloughed off and covered the whole roadway, and we had to just close the road. Okay, cybersecurity tray tabletop exercise. Very good. I went into this meeting thinking, what possibly are we going to talk about for four hours? But I was enlightened and learned a lot. It was incredible, and I encourage everybody that's working in this courthouse. If you've got an email that you think is suspect or a thumb drive that you found and you don't know what's on it, don't use it. Give it to I S. and let them clear it for you before you do anything. Get I S. down there to look at an email. And they are testing you right now too. There is an exercise out there, and they're going to be testing you. So know that, please don't fail the test. Potato farmer called me yesterday, very concerned about the amount of glass on Glade Road in the potato, right along the edge of the potato field. Uh, I actually have people competing, it looks like, when they drive by my farm, trying to hit the circle tires with their beer bottles. They don't realize that if a piece of glass is found in one truckload of potatoes being delivered to lamb or any of these other processing plants, they cull the whole field. You're talking about millions and millions of dollars. And I think we need to be looking at an ordinance to give our sheriff the opportunity and to levy a hefty fine for any glass leaving the vehicle. If they catch somebody throwing a bottle out, I think we should be able to fine them heavily because they could cost a farmer their livelihood. If they lose a potato field, and the field that's planted in front of my house is a hundred and sixty acres, and we're talking, uh, a lot of money. We need to stop the bottle, the glass from leaving the vehicle and getting into the fields. And then we got, uh, House Bill fifteen thirty one. I got this hot topic of list here from our legislature over there, but this fifteen thirty one is a bill that, uh, they're pushing through right now. The bill establishes a state policy requiring public health responses to be guided by best available scientific evidence for controlling disease spread, including immunizations and vaccines. And Walsh has been out there saying that there's a lot of people in this state that won't comply. And I'm telling you right now, as a commissioner of this county, I will push, be pushing not to comply with this. It is a free will that anybody puts a vaccine in their body, and they cannot demand us to take that, even if you're a government employee, because as commissioners, we back up our employees and we back up our citizens. And it's a free will that you take a vaccine. They can't, they can't in tell us that it is mandated. And then at the A G. is suing Adam County, Adams County, because he's saying that they're on direct violation because they are aiding the, uh, the capture of criminal illegally people here in our country. And if we, as a county, cannot protect our citizens from people that are committing serious crimes here illegally, then what are we doing? Why do we even have law enforcement? We've got to be able to get these people out of our county and keep our citizens safe. So I would ask my commissioners, maybe we need to think about asking Adams County if they want some assistance and some help in defending this lawsuit, because if we can't defend our citizens and make them safe, then what are we doing here? We've had numerous staircase, uh, problems out there, and we just had another one this morning. And I thought it was from the narrow of the staircase coming down, going up and going down on the inner part. And my solution was to move the handrail out of the inner handrail to make everybody travel, make it two foot wide. So the handrail takes up all the inner space. So you only have one person going up. You have a hand on each handrail. But talking with Jennifer, she said that it isn't the inner part of the steps. It is the bottom step that they're missing. I don't know if that handrail would help in people managing that last step or maybe putting red on the last step, but we got to find a remedy. We're having way too many instances of people slipping on those stairways, going up and down, and, uh, we don't need a, we don't need a lawsuit for somebody getting hurt.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I filed a report on someone that fell down the stairs last week as well. And.
You did.
Their comment was they were just, um, you know, looking around for the office, and they they missed the last step.
They missed the last step.
And I wonder if we don't just put a motion sensor in there that, like they have at the airport. You are approaching the end of the escalade or bottom step, something, because it happens so often that I don't know what the remedy is, but as many falls as we've had off that last step, something needs to be done.
Yes, I agree. And so we'll, we're, we're working on a remedy there. The veterans, uh, we had a meeting set up for three o'clock, but Tom from Ben Franklin Transit won't be back until, uh, Thursday. So we are setting that up for our veterans and Ben Franklin Transit to get, uh, moved back and forth to the, uh, V A. Hospital in in Walla Walla. And that'll be Monday at twelve thirty that we're meeting. It'll be Brian and I and Tom, and then our V S O. John will be in attendance, and we're going to work on trying to get that. And then if I may, I'd like to, uh, ask Wes to please come to the mic because I have a couple of things that I think that we need to be open and transparent about his office. And one of them is the burn. Uh, we had a gentleman out there the other day that was burning, and he got stopped and told that he couldn't burn, and he's a farmer. And Wes has already looked up all the research here, and it says, non-urban zone, burning in the non-urban zone is allowed without permit or payment of a fee subject to the following condition: Such burning is incidental and commercial agricultural activities. Which means if you're going to burn a field, you have to get a permit. But if you're burning in the spring to clean out a ditch on your farm, you don't have to get a permit, and you don't have to ask permission.
That's my understanding, yes, according to the code that I've read.
Yes, and I thank you so much for such a quick response because I just met with you yesterday and and told you about this. The other item that I would like you to elaborate on is, uh, the farmers out there. Some of them have been paying for a permit to farm out of their house. Could you elaborate on what happened there and how you were alerted of it? The staff is doing a great job out there, bringing you up to speed.
Yeah, I really appreciate my staff. Um, came to my attention, um, on the business registrations that, um, and it's really related to home businesses, uh, home occupations. Uh, you know, a lot of farmers, they farm, they they, uh, do their operation right out of their household. So, uh, you know, that's one of the things we flag. The code, the current code for business registrations actually requires, uh, a business registration for all businesses with a few exceptions. Uh, if you're selling like Amway products from your home and you're under ten thousand dollars, you're exempt from having to have a business registration. Farming is another, uh, aspect. And my staff said, you know, what do you want to do with this? You know, previously, way back, I guess we used to, uh, contact the farmer if they had the registration and verify whether they were just doing farming or if they're doing another business along with their farming. Like if you have, uh, if you're doing your own, uh, fruit stand or, you know, your farm product of your own, that's exempt. If you're running carnivals or events where you're selling other people's products, that's an additional business associated with your farm. Your farm would be exempt, but your other wouldn't. And it came to my attention that we were, uh, the previous administration was ignoring that. They took the attitude that if the fee was paid, that was good enough. We weren't going to do any due diligence on our side to follow up to see if that needed to be refunded. Um, and, uh, we are changing that policy so that, uh, it's a simple email. We email you if you're a farmer and we think it's an error or you're some kind of business that might be an error. We send you an email with a form. You fill that out. You bring it back. If you find out it's one of the exemptions, we will be refunding that money. Um, I can't go back retroactive and figure out what's gone on. But from this point forward, um, you know, I I don't feel we should be taking money that doesn't belong to us from anyone. And so we will be returning those funds.
Wes, I can't thank you enough. That is, uh, what we're looking for here is open, transparent government and, uh, treating our constituents out there as our bosses, and that's who they are.
Yes.
They've elected us. We're working for them. So thank you so much. Is there anything that any other commissioner would like to add? They've elected us, we're working for them. So thank you so much. Is there anything that any other commissioner would like to add?
No, thank you.
Yeah.
I, I, a couple of things, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Um, Wes, thank you. Um, I've, I've turned quite a few people on to you. You've had quite a few discussions with people that have called me and, and how do I, or what do I do here, or this isn't right? And you have taken them all in and I was just sharing with my wife, uh, the day before yesterday, two texts that I received that, um, that was thankful for, for your in, input and insight. So, thank you.
Well, I got lots of help. Thank you.
Thank you, Wes. And thanks for all the good work already. And that will conclude my, um, my, uh.
Mr. Chairman, could I ask a question? Um, Commissioner Mullen said something about the, the Health District and the, the septage. Them implementing this new rule that they have, have they made any indication of how many systems are in compliance or out of compliance and what does compliance mean? Because just having been in that, working in that world for a very long time, more than twenty years, um, it would be my, my, um, you know, guess that they're gonna find, you know, a huge majority. You know, I don't know, I don't know if percentage is the right way of say it, but you know, over eighty percent is, is not going to be found in compliance. Because you, you indicated, you know, that each, each run will have to have a, a site, you know, a way to cite it and so forth. And, and I can tell you, I've put in dozens and dozens and dozens of systems and that is not something that is put in.
Right. It's, it's not been required and not been, I, I've never seen one that hasn't put in is.
Yeah, I haven't either. And so that's why I'm sitting here saying.
But I believe it's if only if this septic system is failing. At that point, it would need to be updated. Now, if it's working properly as originally designed, I believe it is fine.
It would be considered in compliance.
But it is a state issued, um, ordinance and they're basically saying that counties have until January of twenty twenty-seven to get a list of qualified contractors that can go out and do the inspections when there's a land transfer. Because it simply would be, um, overwhelming for the Health Department to try to enforce that and do all those inspections. So they have the time until January of twenty twenty-seven to get the list put together of people that are qualified to do the inspections and are willing to do them.
So have they indicated, I mean, what's, what's the problem that has brought this on? So we're, we're in, we're putting more regulation in place, but what's the, what's the issue that we're, that we're fixing?
I would assume that, and again, I'm just assuming, but you know, in certain counties in the state of Washington, a lot of them still have cesspools. And, um, I, I believe they're trying to get away from those because one, they weren't permitted and and probably trying to address the fact that there's a lot of unpermitted septic systems out there from years ago, from years ago.
So a hundred percent of the people now have to, now have to prove their innocence instead of being innocent until, until there's an issue?
No, I think that they just have to have a septic system that's properly functioning. And they want them addressed, um, to make sure that they're properly functioning before they do the transfer of title.
So it, it sort of is. It's, you're, you're guilty until you, and you have to prove your innocence. You have to prove that you, that, that it is done right simply to sell what the property that you think is yours.
Yeah, I, I'm not saying I'm in favor of it. I'm just, I'm just trying to say what the state is implementing and it's my understanding that if the septic system is currently functioning as it was originally designed and, you know, isn't just an open pit, then you should have no problems. But, um, if it doesn't meet the minimum requirements, then yeah, the issue's gonna have to be addressed. And I think the current cost of putting a septic system in is anywhere from twenty-five to forty thousand dollars for just your basic system. And a lot more expensive if you have to go, I don't know, above ground and, um, other systems that that are, that are gonna be affected because when you look back at some of the older um, developments that, let's say around the lake where your system, your property just even, isn't even qualified to be the minimum lot size for a septic system. I think you're gonna be in, with a major expense to rectify that.
Or you can't sell your property.
That is my understanding, yes.
So you're in a spot where that they're gonna take it away from you.
You can't even, you can't even, you can't even transfer it to your kids.
Yeah.
So.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Trying to make a warning.
So I sit on that Ben Franklin, um, health board too. And not only are we going along with, uh, state's recommendations, we have, uh, won up them and we're making ours even more stringent. That's why I'm asking my commissioners, maybe we start thinking about our own health district right here in our own county. Because, um, yeah, we've got some people over there that obviously are on a power play. They got a little power and they, they wanna exert it and, and, uh, if they're gonna check septic systems, I would say that they need to be over there on that Puget Sound checking all those around those because there's a lot of sewage being pumped out into the Puget Sound. I think there's bigger problems over there. We don't have big waterways over here except for the Columbia River. So anyway, I thank you so much for that, your reports and we'll move down to, uh, public comment. Is there anybody in the room for public comment? Seeing nobody, is there anybody on the, oh. Anybody on the phone?
I waited to see if there was anyone else because I'm a regular commenter. On the septic tank, um, when they say fail or working properly, I wish they would define that a little bit more. Uh, we have a septic tank and it works just great, but they may look at it and say it doesn't. So that's where I'm a little confused on that, that. And they could define that, it'd be helpful. So. Gentlemen, I did send you an email regarding what's called the First Amendment, um, petition. And after a great study and, and watching, uh, people want their government to work for them, we're back at the beginning where our founding fathers meted out what it meant, what the Constitution meant and how it was to be applied. And we've heard over the years about Federalist Papers. Um, but there are some additional building blocks historically where Madison and Jefferson fought with Hamilton to really define exactly how the Constitution is to be applied. And those then set the platform, what's called for the ratification debates. When a state ratifies it, uh, with the state, with the U S Constitution, they, that becomes a compact. They have to agree. And what we're seeing in Washington State, left, right and center, and, and Mr. Diddy, or you mentioned H B.
Fifteen thirty-one.
Fifteen thirty-one. We've also seen the attempt to, uh, constitutionally remove the vote of the people to elect their own sheriff. And then they further tried to make it a certification which the county commissioners can move and take the vote away from the people to elect their own sheriff. And then in that same bill, they wanted to put men and women in the same jail cell. And they like, uh, personal stories, so they are quite a, a load on my testimony in the state legislature. It was kind, but pointed. So what has come about is a group of people have started working with these First Amendment petitions and actually in North Dakota, they stopped the state legislator, from legislatures from making Bitcoin their currency because it has to be based constitutionally on silver and gold. They've also been affecting and changing the direction of Wyoming. And they did it by educating, getting constitutional literacy in the grassroots of the people to support you as our first line of our legislators. So we're looking, I want you to look at that petition. Um, we did have a resolution in a recent meeting at the Franklin County Central Committee regarding Resolution twenty twenty-five dash O two. And I can go down and leave, uh, Teresa this to copy, but it basically was taken language from state House representatives where they said the, um, immunity given Mr. Fauci does not stand on local levels. So municipalities can still go after him. I see it, and so I'm seeing a lot of things happening at the same time from the grassroots level. But in order to organize it, we do petitions to you and we ask you to resolve and appoint a committee here to finalize and get um, recommendation to go to the state level. And I will be coming back and talking to you more about that, but I'm asking you to review those documents for next week. Thank you.
Anybody else for public comment? Any, nobody on the phone? At this time, we'll close the public comment. And then is there any need for executive session?
Mr. Chairman, I would request under R C W forty-two thirty-one ten one I, fifteen minutes, uh, for discussion uh, with legal counsel matters related to agency enforcement actions, litigation or potential litigation.
Okay. And, uh, at this time, it is nine fifty-six. We will recess into executive session at nine fifty-seven and we'll come out at eleven oh. Who will be attending?
So with Board of County Commissioners, the Administrator and Legal Counsel.
And our clerk of the board?
Um, I thought we'd go down to the room downstairs. We got a full house and maybe we'll just go downstairs.
Okay. Alrighty, at this time, we'll recess into executive session at nine fifty-eight. It'll take us a little bit of time to get down there. We'll come back at eleven thirteen. Okay. We are back from executive session. We're back to regular session at this time. With no further business for the good of the county, we will adjourn the meeting. Now at this time, we will open up our workshop. And on the workshop, we have four agenda items, which we are going to change number three to number two. But we will begin with number one. And at this time, if there is no other changes, I would ask for a approval of the workshop agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval of the workshop agenda as you just described.
Second.
I made a motion to second to approve the workshop agenda. Items one, three, two, and four. And at this time, our first item on the agenda is a public comment. Is there anybody that would like to comment on any one of these four items before the meeting starts? So with nobody stepping forward and nobody on the phones, we will begin with the presentation of the Franklin County Water Conservancy Board update.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My name's Mark Nielsen. I'm the Treasurer with the Franklin County Water Conservancy Board. To my left is Lynn Hall. He's the Chair of the Conservancy Board. And to my right is Dr. Daryl Olson. He is actually the Chair of the Benton County Water Conservancy Board. But they're working on some projects that have some impacts on a regional nature. And so we just, it's been a long time since the Conservancy Board has addressed the County Commissioners. The County Commissioners, just for a little history lesson, established the Water Conservancy Board back in nineteen ninety-nine. Dr. Olson was pretty much the author of that legislation that created Conservancy Boards. So back in nineteen ninety-nine, when the County Commissioners created the Board, they, the Conservation District testified in support and also basically promised technical and administrative assistance to it. So I bring that up because I was the Conservation District Manager for thirty-seven years. I'm now retired, but the Conservation District will still provide administrative and technical support to the Conservancy Board, which is very helpful. We're not quite the Superman that Daryl Olson is. We need a little help with the admin. So with that, what I thought we would do is just run through some of the current projects that are in the books, current and just recent past activities that we have done, and then turn it over to Daryl for some of the Benton County activities. Because Benton and Franklin County, as you know, we're intertwined. And quite often, what happens in one county is going to happen in the other county eventually. And so with that, what I handed out to you really are just brain ticks. I'm not even going to touch on all of these topics, but if you see a name in there that you want to say, hey, what's this project? Let me know. And we'll jump to it. But otherwise, just going to give you kind of a flavor of some of the activities the Conservancy Boards go through. And let me back up. Conservancy Boards, all they do is change water rights. We change water rights. We either change the place of use, purpose of use. You know, quantities can be tweaked a little bit, but all we do is change water rights, private water rights, or state water rights, I should say. And that is our sole function. We have a very narrow function. We have a very narrow review process. We look to see, is that water right valid? How much is being used? Is it available for change and transfer? And if all the laws and requirements are met, then we will approve that transfer. We don't have a choice. We've been pretty successful with Franklin County. I'd say about ninety-five percent of the decisions we've made over the past, since nineteen ninety-nine, they've been approved by ecology. It's that other five percent that are causing us problems, and that other five percent that they have denied has occurred in the more current history than in the past. So in other words, something has changed in like the last six years where we are getting a higher level of denial from ecology than we did in previous years. So with that said, just kind of history, we were real busy the last couple of years. We did, we got thirty-six applications from the City of Pasco for water right changes and transfers in, I believe, twenty twenty-three. We've got, we completed all those. Two-thirds of those transfers are transfers from agricultural to municipal. And so while a water right transfer, every time a transfer occurs, we see basically increased economic activity. So a water right transfer isn't just about moving water, it's about increasing economic activity in the county. So if, you know, if we've got delays or denials on these approvals, then it definitely impacts our economic activity. But, so we transfer over thirty water rights to Pasco. That's agricultural production that goes out of production. So on the one hand, we're getting an increase in economic activity. On the other hand, we're losing agricultural production. And so we don't get to make a judgment call on that. It's like if all the laws are met, we transfer. And so we are losing a chunk of agricultural water to municipal right now. Richview Water System, another agricultural transfer to a domestic water right, subdivision building area out along the river. That one went pretty straightforward once we got rid of the consultant. And that's one thing, just want to alert to you, if you're dealing with people that are dealing with water rights, tell them to come talk to the Conservancy Board first. We're fighting that the consultants sometimes are selling a bill of goods that they can't necessarily deliver. And so just please, with your constituents, tell them to come talk to us first. Then they can go out and hire a consultant, but they will have the base knowledge that, you know, they can't make gold out of straw type of stuff. Let's see, Dairy Gold, new industry coming in. Of course, that's an agricultural water right that has to be transferred to municipal also. So we're working on that. Going to skip around a little bit here. The five oh eight fourteen, or Pasco Basin Aquifer, has Department of Ecology briefed this board, the County Commissioners, on that process? That's very disappointing.
I sit on the couple of water boards, and I am very familiar with it. And I'm arguing the fact that this water that they proclaim is there because of the Columbia Basin Irrigation Project has been paid for, for the construction, operation, and delivery of the water to the Columbia Basin, and therefore it's the farmer's water. And I don't know why they think they can sell it again. We should be able to reuse that water without any charge.
There's a lot of considerations, but my point being, I'm disappointed, this process is going to have a huge impact to Franklin County and to Franklin County water right holders. The existing water right holders right now, they, most of them down south here, have been issued a water right with a provision on it that's called the five oh eight fourteen provision. And what that says is we will never certificate those water rights. They will stay in permit status forever until we decide what the Bureau of Reclamation and Department of Ecology are going to do with the water that's mounted north of Pasco. That's what that says. So we have hundreds of water rights that are not certificated and that are ripe for, you know, the, let me back up. Ecology should be briefing you guys directly. They should be coming down as a board and basically, you know, giving you information. And that's been my biggest frustration with Ecology. Because if you're a current user of a five oh eight fourteen permit, you are not paying any user fee to the Bureau. Okay? Under the potential process, that water right could, one of two things could happen to it. It could be just certificated, issued as a state water right, it's no longer Bureau Water. Thank you very much, Clint, for paying your bill, and I'm going to use it. The other option is it converts over to a Bureau water right, and then they start paying a per acre fee, just like they were part of the Columbia Basin Project. And so that's going to impact a lot of people, and that's going to be a big economic impact. And so it's going to also potentially get your constituents headbutted. Because you've got one set of constituents that are within the irrigation project, and you've got your other set of constituents that aren't. They have put in infrastructure, drilled wells, put in, you know, so they, it's not like they don't have any economic costs associated with that. They just built their project on their own as opposed to part of the Bureau project. So it's going to create conflict. And I want to warn you, and I'm really disappointed Ecology is not down here trying to get ahead of that, because you guys are probably going to end up dealing with it. So heads up.
And the other, the other part of that is, I've also said, as a solution, that water should be available to this part of our region. And therefore, the water that's being delivered to this region by the Columbia Basin Irrigation Project could be then used for the East High completion of. I'm trying to give them a solution. I mean, we've got all this water down here in an aquifer that they claim is theirs, but we paid for it. And that's why it's accumulated here, is because of our paying for the construction, the operation, and delivery thereof.
Well, and that's right. And that's the whole, that's the whole process that Ecology and the Bureau are going through right now. But it's being done in a dark, back, smoke-filled room somewhere, and nobody, so everybody is, me included, and I probably know as much about this as anybody, I'm taking guesses. What are they doing? And that's not good when you have everybody out there guessing, and because, you know, it's not transparent. People don't get a chance to participate. So anyway, I'll move on.
I, Mr. Olson, you looked like you wanted to say something. Did you have any comment on that? Didn't mean to put you on the spot, but it was looking like you wanted to comment. No? No?
Wants to know if you, he wants to know if you want to comment.
Oh, I couldn't tell, a glare on the window, I can't see.
Oh.
I didn't really, I thought you were talking to someone.
No, I was talking to you. You looked like you wanted to comment on it.
Well, I'll comment when, when he completes it. I'm sorry, I couldn't see.
And then, and then I want to make you aware.
It was a halo effect.
A light.
Really? And then I want to make you aware that we do have a former person that's in the back of the room that's in our planning and building that has very extensively worked on waters, the water issues.
We just tried to get Wes to be an alternate on the conservancy board.
Excellent.
But he's, he's, you know, hedging. So, a couple of other problematic ones. City of Burbank, we transferred, we were trying to transfer municipal water to Pasco for municipal to municipal, and that ended up in a lawsuit. We went all the way through the appellate court, and the appellate court chickened out and sent it all the way back to the, to the pollution control hearings board. And so, at that point, you know, that's, that is a strategy that Ecology uses, is they can just grind an applicant into the dirt with the power and the force of the state treasury, whereas, you know, at the end of the day, we just couldn't, we just couldn't afford to go through another round of litigation. So, they won on that one, in effect, by beating us up. Loyal Pig in May, those are another couple of denials that we received that the issue revolves around Ecology's interpretation of hydraulic connectivity, you know, ground and surface water interaction, et cetera, et cetera. And, you know, their current interpretations have caused both the Franklin Board and the Benton Board problems. And, and so, we're starting to see a lot more problems arise than in years past.
So, I see Conell down here. Is that for the water rights that they were granted long ago that were, we've met with Conell, Dr. Olson and myself, and Dwayne Davidson, trying to see if there's a chance that we could fulfill their water rights dating back to, what, nineteen teens, teens or twenties, was it, that they were granted water rights? Mr. Olson, wasn't that the?
Approximately, yes.
Yeah. They have these water, and they have the documents.
At this, and I'm not sure if this is dealing with that one. This is just more of consolidation of all their water rights.
Okay.
So, they're adding a new well in, in Conell, and they just need to associate all their water rights with that well.
I got you.
And so, it's just really simply a consolidation and a new well. That one ought to, ought to be pretty straightforward, and.
Actually, it wasn't Conell, it was Kalotas that we were working on. It was Kalotas out there that have the water rights and haven't been given the ability for water delivery. And they have two sources that they could get water from. The two sources were the.
Possibly the Snake River.
Snake River, and then the other was the, the, what's the river that goes down through Weitzberg and?
Toucanon, I think, is what it is.
Yeah. So, we, we were working there, because if they could develop a water board, then they could, that water board could manage a septic system, because in a bad winter, they get a lot of moisture, they can't drink their well water. It makes a mess for them. So, we were trying to put together a chance, but whether they want it or not, I don't know.
And they haven't approached us yet, anyway. So, apparently, it didn't.
Well, he will be, because I'm going to tell him.
And then, let's see, that's really, you know, that's the flavor. Department of Natural Resources is on there, because they've got eight water rights sitting in front of our queue, and they've been there for like eight years. It's like these state agencies, we just, the, the problem is, we see this constant turn gate of employees in there. And so, you know, it's disappointing to see a state agency manage their water rights in such a fashion, let me just put it that way. And so, with that, I'm going to turn it over.
Well, before you leave, one other concern I have is the transfer of water rights. It only can be done downstream.
For the most part.
Yeah. So, this makes it that, that's why I was in, making this plea to let the farmers down here over that Aquifer utilize that water, because then you're not transferring it upstream. And then, they, they could use that for the East High. That, that was my whole argument there.
You.
Just a thought.
You said that Ecology is denying these things more often. What do you, what do you, what's the reasoning behind that?
Some of it has to do with that, kind of the new interpretations of hydraulic connectivity and same body of public groundwater, et cetera. Some of them gets into some very technical interpretations, but those, you know, those technical interpretations have impact. And where we interpreted it one way in the past, now it's being interpreted another way, for instance, and, but all under the guise of, of technical knowledge.
Wouldn't understand.
What's that?
They say you wouldn't understand.
Or, they just say we're wrong, and that they're right, even though we have hydrogeol, you know, geologists that will say, we are right, and they're wrong. That is one area. What's another area?
Well, one area that I have a very concern is the Health Department and the testing of these wells. They're out there testing these wells, and all I hear is farming and nitrates. And so, I know there's a move on the farming industry because of contamination of nitrates, but I clued them up to the fact that I, my mom still has the documentation. In nineteen fifty-five, when her and dad moved on that ground and lived in a tent, and they drilled that first well, the nitrates were higher than, you couldn't even use the water to make formula for a baby. And so, if farming is the cause of it, why was it so high then?
I, I've been meaning to meet with you on that particular topic, Clint.
Okay.
It does get into some complexity and stuff, and in fact, I'm very aware of that. Also, remember, Eltopia School was closed down back in that same time era for nitrates. And I think I've got an explanation, but I'd like to sit down with you. I remember sitting on the Columbia Basin Groundwater Management Area with your father, for instance, and, and that story came up. And so, we had to dig into that. You know, your daughter, your, your father was not willing to just accept, you know, oh, it's always been, no.
The apple don't fall too far from the tree.
I was going to say, I know where you, where you get it from. So, we had to dig into that. And so, I'd be more than happy to sit down with you, because it is fairly interesting.
Well, and I, I just, it's a very big concern to me, because demonizing farming is something we don't want to do in the Columbia Basin, and it would collapse our industry here.
And I agree absolutely. Conversely, we've got to, you know, sometime take responsibility to, so.
Okay.
With that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Olson and let him talk about some of the Benton County projects and potentially kind of how they may influence Franklin County. And then, he's going to kind of wrap on, wrap up with, how can you help?
So, you indicated that Pasco has made thirty-two changes in water rates in recent. Is that the last two years, five years?
That was like in the last two years, and we've got some more in the queue. And we've, I think we've got seven or eight that are already in the queue for Pasco now. I mean, Pasco is growing, and they need water, and they're gobbling it up.
So, what happens, what happens if you sell a piece of property within city limits of Pasco? What happens to your water rights?
Unless there is a specific language in the sales, then the water rights will go with the property. But I have seen water rights stripped off the property, and, and so, the land goes without the water. So, it really comes down to the, the sales document.
And with that, again, the water right can only be transferred downstream.
Well, groundwater is a little different. It, it, and most of our water rights that we deal with are groundwater. The only ones that we really deal with in surface water are along the Snake River and then Pasco a little bit, but the vast majority are actually groundwater rights. And the test there is same body of public groundwater as opposed to downstream, upstream. So, so, it's a little different. You know, we can, for instance, go uphill with groundwater if you get into that whole same body of public groundwater thing, so.
So, for clarification, because I've heard stories that when you sell land inside the city limits, that the city of Pasco is basically seizing your water rights.
They, you know, I don't, I'll be honest, I don't know where Pasco is currently. In years past, they've had ordinances that basically say, if you, you, you have to give up your water right if you sell that land, because they need it, or you could pay a, you know, in lieu mitigation fee. That's, that's one thing they have done kind of in the past. And then, they've morphed, and I don't know, I think they're revisiting it right now, as a matter of fact. And so, but the reality is, they got in trouble a little bit by allowing industry to move in and didn't have any water to backfill them, and so, they started going in deficit a little bit. And so, you know, if you want to develop in Pasco, right now, pretty much the developers are being required to bring their water, which is agricultural irrigation for the most part. But so, you know, check with city council. I, like I said, I don't know exactly where they're at now. Seems like they were, it's a topic that is currently, seems like it's in their agenda because they needed to tweak that. So, my apologies, I just can't give you the exact answer, but I know that they've been playing around with that stuff for a number of years.
Thank you.
I may have something on that, too. I think in the cities, there's provisions in their development code. It might be in the section where they charge their water connection fees related to if you have water rights or not, it, it would impact your water connection fees. And I know there's been a lot of discussion about people transferring water rights and, and the impact of that on your water connection fees, and certainly would be more if you're coming into a development and not having those fees. If you transferred your water rights away before subdividing your property. I, I think historically, the city may have realized that they weren't charging enough for connection fees, and so, development community realized that it was cheaper to sell the water rights and then develop, and then pay for city water connection fees rather than, you know, leaving those water rights pertinent to the property and then subdividing with the existing water rights.
Go ahead, Mr. Olson.
And thank you. And thanks for taking the time today to hear what we're talking about on the conservancy boards. I can answer that question more directly. We're working with Pasco right now, Columbia Snake River Irrigators on some of that stuff. But for the record, though, I'm chairman of the conservancy board. I'm also a board representative for Columbia Snake River Irrigators. So, and Pasco and others are members of Columbia Snake River Irrigators, so we've assisted them on a number of changes and transfers, working with Mark, and then also the title transfers, which used to be much more simple than what it is now. But as Mark says, nothing's simple anymore dealing with, with ecology. What I was going to do is just barely touch on a couple of the things that are on your agenda table there, just to give it a little more flavor of what's happening. Because the conservancy boards have gone along and kind of minding their own business, working with water right holders, and for over twenty years. And in Benton, Franklin County, what that means is, we have literally helped them generate hundreds of millions of dollars. I mean, these are big dollar ticket items. They don't require a lot of cost to anyone. You know, there's minor fees, really minor fees, the conservancy boards, but it's providing a very vital task. And as Mark said, we're, we're dealing with the transfers, or we're auditing for lenders. Almost anybody right now, if you're going to buy a piece of property or anything that has a water right on it, the lenders automatically want a third party to look at it and tell us, you know, is the water right sound, is what's there, et cetera. And so, we have been doing a lot of that, both the conservancy boards and also Columbia Snake River Irrigators, to be able to provide certainty to the lenders. So, the process that has gone on, again, as it used to be extremely mundane, kind of, and very quiet, and more recently, when you look at though, these lists of these water rights that we're dealing with, much higher visibility, projects have come in. So, I thought, you know, just for the sake of, of interest, Benton has worked on two of the largest solar wind farm projects in the state. And in fact, if you were reading the Seattle Times last Sunday, you know, top of the fold here, we've got Watoma up there in Northwest County, and Benton County Water Conservancy Board is dealing with that water right the same way we dealt with the wind farm out on Horse Heaven Hills. The, I bring those up because they can show the utility and the range of what the conservancy boards do or can do, but we don't make policy. That's not our job. We implement policy that is, is made by, you know, either the county commissioners or the legislature, or in rulemaking with Ecology. So, I'll just kind of touch a little bit on the wind farm, because it was so bizarre. Wind farm is coming in, you know, they're working with the Energy Facility Site Evaluation Council, FSSEC. They override the county on land use decisions. They override just about everybody on permitting and decisions. And so, one of the things that they needed to do was change your water right. And by they, it was the Washington State Department of Natural Resources water right. They were the actual applicant, and a lot of their ground was involved. So, Ecology called us and said, can you guys work on this water right transfer? Which we would do anyway. I mean, that was just, that's a normal thing. But we did say, that's kind of odd you would ask us to do this, because, I mean, this is the governor's project. We would think you guys would want to be front and center and, you know, get the publicity or whatever for it. We, you know, we can do it as an action. So, it started out that way. As Mark said, the consultant gave some bad information right off the bat. Well, we had to go in and straighten that out. And then, one of the things we did to try to exercise our ability to communicate, you know, particularly with electeds and the public, is we met directly with the Benton County Commissioners, Yakima County Commissioners, to explain our role and just how the law worked. It just, it's pretty straightforward here. We don't put any judgment into that, whether it's good or bad. We also brought in the Yakima Nation that opposed this and explained to them what the situation was, and, you know, and then we began to proceed. Now, what became a little, even more odd in this, when FSSEC did the first decision, you know, round one on this, the person from Department of Natural Resources that sat on the FSSEC board voted against the project. It's their application, and they voted against the project. Yeah, that's what we look, what is going on? You know, we, we run down, you know, somebody, Ms. Franz was running for election, so she was hard to get ahold of, ran down somebody up there in Olympia. They came back and said, no, 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 we, we want the project, you know, and we, okay, don't waste our time. Yeah, this, this is great. So, okay, we move forward again with it, trying to get it forward, and, you know, second vote on FSSEC, and for whatever reason, the DNR guy votes, votes against it again. And we're like, okay, it doesn't matter, we made our decision, it's, it's gone forward, and it's now Ecology gets their forty-five day review period. We do this, and lo and behold, about on day forty, the consultant for DNR calls us and says, would you guys withdraw your decision? And we said, we don't know what you guys are thinking or doing or, you know, anything else. I mean, FSSEC is the one that really gets the final say in the governor, and we're just horsing around here with this little water right issue. And so, we said, we'll treat everybody the same. If an applicant came in for some reason, we made a decision, and they said, we want you to pull the decision, all they'd have to do is ask it. And we would do that, because like, like you folks, we feel like we work for the people there, the applicants, the people in the county. If they want it, pull, we'll pull it, no questions asked. So, we asked them to put it in writing, DNR, they finally put it in writing, and we did move forward withdrawing it, although we did send a pretty detailed memorandum to the governor and also to DNR and the county commissioners and the tribes, saying, you know, this is just atrocious, the way this is being handled. You know, I, you, you guys have to do better than this. So, that was kind of a more glorious example of what goes on. You, you'd asked about the difficulty with Ecology, one of the water rights you'll see here on changed transfers, Mercer. We have spent five years fighting with Ecology on that, and went into litigation, came out of litigation, settlement agreement. We thought we had, you know, a settlement agreement, and we did, it's just we're fighting about every technical point of everything we thought we agreed to. And so, that literally was not signed by the board until last Friday, approved by the board. 10,000 acres worth of water right change transfer, five years in limbo. You know, and, uh, that's an extreme example. Other stuff, though, we're doing with the city of Pasco. We're helping them as, what is, we're seeing more typically is where you have the water right, land owners, water right owners, you know, oftentimes pivot. And they're wanting to donate the water to the city. And they've, you know, worked out whatever financial transactions they want to do. But they're donating it to the city so that the developer can then come in and have municipal water supply. That doesn't become an issue. And so, we've been working with them, uh, the new city, deputy city manager, and making that happen, you know, get that together. And that's, again, what should have been something almost like a quiet title action is now, I mean, it's just months and months and months. And, and it's, even when you have a cooperative set of people, you know, in ecology, which I think we do have, it's just, it's just not moving. So, those are some examples. I do want to offer, I guess, sort of a punchline in, you know, what is it you folks could do? And we had this meeting as well with your counterparts over in Benton County. And what we, what we suggested is if the county commissioners from definitely Benton and Franklin and probably Yakima, Grant, those that particularly that are having, and Walla Walla particularly that have Columbia River, Lower Snake jurisdiction, to have one meeting here in the fall with, just with the county conservancy board members and have a very tight review of what is it you could do administratively, which might be, you know, forcing ecology to go into rulemaking. You're gonna laugh when I tell you this. They don't like to go into rulemaking anymore. Why should we do that when we can just write policies? Mark and I have formally petitioned, you know, the governor's office and ecology for rulemaking, and they've just, we're not doing it.
So, your recommendation is that we would, we would convene, uh, five counties and all the commissioners in a meeting with the conservancy board and come out of that with a joint letter of, of request, asking them to go into rulemaking? Is that basically?
That would be one of the items. Part of that rulemaking, though, is extremely important. We've lost control of the Columbia River. And what I mean by that is when all of this came about in about 2005, 2006, when the Office of Columbia River was formed. CSRA, by the way, handed the ecology director, the org chart for that. "We need to have an Office of Columbia River." And they took a swipe on it. And it was, had jurisdiction for all these kind of things. So, anything that was, had to be affect the Columbia, anything that was coming between Franklin and the Columbia, you know, Pasco, et cetera. That was all being handled by the Office of Columbia River. And the, the mindset was, yeah, wouldn't it be a good idea to try to maximize the water rights we have and the water that's there? You know, we, we're not, they do have authority to issue new permits. But we were just trying to get it, you know, help us get through the changes and the audits and everything. Just let us get through that. And that worked pretty well until inter-jurisdictional fights within ecology and just turf. And so, the program, Water Resource Program, started taking over functions that, that OCR had. So, I mean, that's the example. But yes, we need, nothing long, one three-hour meeting, but we've got all the, the decision makers there. And, you know, their conservancy boards ask for a very narrow set of action items and, and bring that to your attention. Because that's, it's gonna take that kind of political horsepower, I think, to move, you know, ecology, maybe not even necessary, the legislature in this case, and, and then the governor. But I think that would be enough to get it done. So...
Dr. Olson. So, the five counties that you would suggest to be Franklin, Benton, Yakima? What are the other two?
Walla Walla, Grant. Everybody that's, you know, has some sort of jurisdiction bumping up into the, into the Columbia or almost Columbia, Snake.
But what about the lower counties that are up against the Columbia? Isn't Clickatad up against them?
Yes, Clickatad. Good point, yes.
Would be that, who else?
Well, we work with Clickatad. I didn't mean to leave them out. The other counties, I'm not even sure if they've got water conservancy boards down there.
We'd want everybody there so that we, the letter would have more force when we put it together. And I think, you know, I can't speak for the other counties, but I know this county would be willing to do that, I believe. You have the other commissioners.
Ashland County, for instance, is probably another one.
Yeah.
Up north, yes.
Yeah, Okanagan. The key is get control of the Columbia. I mean, we, we are incrementalists. You know, we're, what is it that we can do? Can we realistically get our hands back on? And it would probably be Columbia River operations.
I think it'd be, you'd be the head person here to set that meeting up. And where the location would be, would be wherever. But I, uh, Mr. Danzel, do you, what, your thoughts on this?
Uh, you know, I, if you're looking at this, there's already sort of something that's created for us called the Columbia River Policy Advisory Group. I know Mr. McCarty served on that, uh, for many years. That'd be a good place to start. I think you could probably...
Wrong item. And I don't mean to say that in a negative way. It's just they have a completely different purpose.
No, I, I think you misunderstand. Those are the counties for which that would be...
Oh, the county group?
Yeah, like Ferry County, Okanagan County, all the different counties up north, the counties here, then the counties out west. So, I think that's where I would look at who's the member counties there. And then I don't, I don't know that they can do that. I think it would probably be a joint counties meeting is based on what I'm saying, that the water conservancy boards could present to? Is that what you're looking for?
Yeah, I thought you were referring to the advisory committee, the Columbia River Advisory Committee to OCR.
No, not to hold the meeting. Those are, those are the, the member counties that I would invite to this meeting. I think the counties would hold the meeting, if that makes sense. Water Conservancy Board, yeah.
But we can, um, help, you know, keep the communications rolling so that the county commissioners can move forward to it. I mean, it obviously has got a lot more authority if the commissioners are, are requesting people to come together than, you know, just the conservancy boards.
Would you want one member from each county or all the members from each county?
I think one would be minimum.
Yeah, I would like to see all the members from the county because the more signatures, the more powerful the document.
Well, and I would, I would point out, um, to chair that the Administrative Procedure Act that the, that the ecology would, would follow for rulemaking has a public participation process sort of baked into it.
Yeah.
It sounds like they're not, they're not wanting to do this rulemaking function, but should they be doing that? They, they should be soliciting, uh, public participation as part of that.
And, and on their most recent one, they, well, no. In the policy position, they, they, it was an open process. They ran it almost like a rulemaking process. They just did not want to call it a rulemaking.
It was a policy.
It was a policy. And they did not want to put it in whack.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
So, um, it sounds like that you're in favor of this. I certainly am, and, and...
I already seen a nod from Commissioner Mullin.
So, what if we were to ask our administrator to, to start to assemble this with, with your assistance? Um, I think that we have a great location here with the Hapo Center. If we were to start assembling it, put a, put a date on a map and get an invite out as soon as we could so that, um, as many as possible were able to assemble. And, and if, if you would work to, to assemble kind of what an agenda might look like. And, um, is this something where that we should invite the ecology to be an audience member? Um, no. Okay, fair enough.
No, I, I know what you're saying. Normally, we're big on that, but this is...
We've already been trying to work with them.
We've petitioned them already several times and got slammed.
I can work with you and come up with a game plan, I think. That'd be pretty easy to facilitate this whole thing.
I, I want you to know that that gentleman right there is the one that referred you to, uh, the Trump administration. So, he's got ties to the Trump administration, and I think would be pretty important on this issue.
And you could work with Jared, too, and Ben at the same time if that all happened. I just had one item I want to bring to your attention because it's pretty important. And this involves the, uh, recent activity on Columbia River Treaty.
Yeah.
The, they are, since October, uh, have begun the interim procedures for operations on the Columbia, in which means they've totally changed the flood control rule curves. And normally, you think of all this stuff as just sort of out there somewhere. You know, you can't get your hands on it. But unfortunately, with the exception of Grand Cooley Dam, the only other reservoir that has any major storage capability is John Day and John Day Pool. And technically, um, there's a half million acre feet of storage on John Day Pool when you draw it down to minimum operating pool. Now, we've dealt with the Corps of Engineers on this for 30 years on, "Don't tamper with John Day Pool." Because if you move it five, six feet, you knock out all the irrigation pumping on both sides of the river. It's very sensitive. So, uh, we have had conversations with U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, the Office of Reservoir Control, the chief there. And he's, under the assumptions right now, they're supposed to be implementing that flood control regulation, which means some percentage of the time, we don't know if it's 20, 30, you know, over the water years, they would come in and draw down John Day Pool five, six feet for minimum operating pool. That is a very, very significant action to the irrigators and to some of the communities, but particularly to the irrigators. So, we've asked them to come up on April 3rd. The Columbia River Irrigators has has a special meeting. I think you've got notice of it. You'll get it again. But it's, it's open, I guess, to all the commissioners, anyone that, you know, particularly the electeds that are available to come and listen to this and hear firsthand exactly what Army Corps of Engineers is looking at in this new three-year interim period affecting this. And, you know, and how much flexibility are they gonna build into that? Not only during the interim, but thereafter? When it, you know, we, far as we know, it stays there for 40 years. So, this is a very significant operation on the main stem Snake and Columbia River that directly affects us. And you've got, you know, irrigators that own ground in Franklin and in Benton County that are affected by this. It, you, I, your dog is in the fight. I think you need to hear it firsthand.
And I would encourage my other commissioners to attend that meeting. It is a well, well-attended meeting and a lot of good information.
I would look forward to an invite, and, and we'll certainly try.
Share it with them. Yep. I just checked my calendar. It's already on there.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate your time, gentlemen.
Oh, we appreciate your efforts. Thank you. And we'll, we'll talk about the nitrates in the water.
Yeah, I'll, I'll...
Yeah, we'll talk.
I've, I've got some theories. And some data.
Yes.
On the, um, item number three, uh, a liant will not be presenting today.
They will not?
No, you've just got the, uh, Matt Henderson Marsh McLennan Agency.
Okay, so, at this time, we'll move on to item number three. Benefits.
Teresa, when you get a chance, can we get the...
Mr. Henderson.
Yes, sir.
I'm just gonna set this up and I'll get out of your way.
Sounds great.
This, if you're on your slide down, moves you in the right direction.
Are the phone lines open right now? Oh, they are, so we still need downstairs. Okay. As I say, she could take over.
Mine is, uh, Twix related. No, mine is not a cold, it's, uh, Nugent and Carbo.
Well, I think we're ready when you are.
Yes, Mr. Anderson.
Great. So, I, uh, in, in a lot of the communications, uh, was told to keep this, you know, really high-level broad strokes. I figure we should be able to get this two, three hours. Does that sound like a reasonable amount of time?
You know that, I mean...
Well, it's really a pleasure to be here today. You know, my, my history with the county goes back a long time. I'll start with just a very brief introduction, talk a little bit about myself, a little bit about that history, and then we'll get into, uh, the slide deck, which is really intended to be very educational today. Well, I don't want to get ahead of myself. So, um, you know, I've been in this profession since 2002. I call this my Obamacare gray hair. I know it's hard to believe because I look like I may be 32, 33 years old, but I've been doing this a long time. I'm a Pasco native, a proud bulldog. A story that I love to tell is when, uh, when I moved my wife, who's from Spokane, back to the Tri-Cities in 2004. She says, "Why are we only looking at houses in Pasco?" And I said, "You know, you're not from here." I could try to explain the dynamic of the Tri-Cities. We're going to live in Pasco. And, uh, up until very recently, that was the case. You know, we, we found our forever home. It's on the dark side of the river. But, um, uh, at least it's not Kennewick, it's not Richland. It's technically in the county, but it's a West Richland address. And thank goodness that my own children are Hanford Falcons, not those, that, those dastardly Richland bombers. So, um, I'm very involved in the community. Uh, I'm on the board for the YMCA here locally, for Junior Achievement here locally. I serve with Commissioner Baumann on the Lord's Hospital Board, and we'll talk a little bit about some unique insight that that gives me in, in the role as a, as an employee benefits and healthcare consultant. And I'm the, uh, the board chair at Lord's currently and am the board chair of the Colombians Drum and Bugle Corps. And want to thank the county for the, your help last year, primarily through Commissioner Baumann, and helping the Colombians do our, our all-day spring training, uh, at the Hapo Center. That facility worked out wonderful for us. So, just in, in full transparency, again, I've, have developed a good friendship with Commissioner Baumann over the last few years, serving on the board. Commissioner Ditter, you, Ditter, you may remember our lunch meeting right after you were elected and, and kind of going through some of the history of the county. And, uh, and Commissioner Mullin, I think we've talked on the phone a couple times. But, um, uh, really want to acknowledge, uh, because I've observed a lot of commissioner meetings over the last few years, um, the work that you have all done to really make these... There's a high-functioning commission and a very good use of time. I was delighted to listen to that last session. It's, it's very rare that I think, you know, think to myself, "My job is, is not as complex as the other people in the room." I deal with insurance companies and healthcare providers. They deal with governmental agencies. So, that's a whole different ballgame. So, uh, with that, you know, just my history with the county. The last time the county, uh, entertained, uh, using a different consultant was when, um, the, the insurance program that the county was part of was going away. And the county commis, uh, county administrator at the time and, and HR manager decided to go through a, a process of selecting a broker consultant to help the county charter a path forward and put in place their own programs. It was, it was a very thoughtful and thorough process. A committee was formed with representatives from various departments within the county, you know, representatives from the different bargained units. And a, and a request for proposal was put out to the public for brokers to respond. It was very extensive. Those generally take many, many dozens of hours to prepare the response for. And the committee was tasked with reading the proposals, evaluating the responses, picking the top six, doing, uh, in-person interviews with the top six, picking the top three, and then ranking them one, two, and three, and making the recommendation to the commissioners, who ultimately have the decision on, on who's chosen in that role. I was very proud, uh, when I got the call from the county administrator at the time, letting me know that, "Hey, you, you were number one in this process." And then the next day, he said, "Yeah, we need to come to your, your office to meet with you." And I thought it was a formal, "Hey, congratulations, you've been chosen." And we'll talk about kind of some of the programs that, that tipped the scale of my... favor, that are still very relevant today as we go through the presentation. But I was informed, oh, that the, one of the commissioners has decided to go have the top two go to the market and get bids from the insurance companies. And I said, "Time out. This was, this was a broker selection process." I mean, is the commission aware, you know, having multiple brokers, and I think you might have heard this a little bit in, in the meeting last week, getting the same data, going to the same carriers, they're going to get the same results. And when they shared with me who the top two were, I said, "Okay, well, I know which way this is going." And that's, that's where you've been ever since. And not to say they've done a bad job, but I feel like, okay, I've been waiting for this for about 14 years, another, another bite at the apple, so to speak. So, it's with that enthusiasm that I come to the presentation today to do some, some very high-level education and hopefully give you a flavor for me and how I approach this dilemma of the rising cost of healthcare, which has a direct correlation to your bottom line, because as healthcare costs rise, health insurance costs rise. And there's a myriad of ways that we can tackle that, most of which we're going to be talking about today. So, let's see if I can do the clicker the correct way. First of all, I'll point it at the, maybe? We're just going to do it the old-fashioned way.
It might be off, sorry.
No?
An on-off button on the, on this, yeah, there's an on-off button. So, if it's, I have to go old-fashioned.
Old-fashioned, maybe? If this is wanting to even do that, it's not wanting to respond at all. There we go. So, first of all, let's, let's talk about what we're not going to talk about today. You know, I work for Marsh McLennan Agency, we're the largest broker in the world, yada, yada, yada. And I say that because as I look at the, the brokers who've been invited to come give presentations, there's a lot of similarity, a lot of overlap in capability, you know, someone in my shoes who talks about, you know, how great of service they provide, the, the vast resources they have internally to help all of our clients with things like compliance, with help with HR issues, et cetera, that's really not is what, what is going to move the needle. So, I am purposefully steering away from that. That's really the last you're going to hear, and, and here's why. I've been given a list of topics that you want education on, and that's what the focus needs to be. A little bit, and I've got a slide or two on each one of these. PEB and the Washington County Insurance Fund, a little bit on ICRA, group fully insured options that you're doing now, a little bit about self-insurance, different flavor of self-insurance, which is level funded, and then we can talk a little bit about, you know, how you're funding your plan, different contribution models, et cetera. But I'm going to do that all through the lens of, well, that blew up a little too big, sustainability. This has been my mantra in my profession, is if we're not talking about a sustainable approach to tackling the problem of rising costs, any one of those solutions that may end up rising to the top is the right solution, is little more than rearranging the deck chairs on the Titanic. It might put a Band-Aid on it for a little while, but if we don't take some real hard looks at potentially some bold actions, we're ultimately not going to move the needle. So, that's, as we learn, we're also going to have a little bit of a conversation about, okay, is that a sustainable approach or not? And, and by the way, feel free to interrupt me, ask questions. The one thing that I didn't talk in my introduction is I spent my first two years in college intending to be a high school music teacher. Quite a pivot from that to the insurance profession. It's been a good move, but I've been able to spend 28 years still being involved in music, coaching high school marching band, coaching percussion. In fact, as Councilman Harpster just left, he just joined the board at Lord's Hospital, and we had a little gathering last night, and when we were introduced, he goes, "You taught percussion at Pasco High like a long time ago, right?" "Yes, I did. I was one of your students." And this was 20 years ago, so it was holy moly. That just speaks to the nature of, as we've grown, it's still a pretty small town at the end of the day. So, sustainability is really going to be the focus. So, let's talk about the first agenda item, PEB, the Public Employee Benefits Board, Washington County Insurance Fund. They're, they're two separate programs, but I lumped them together because the idea is we're going to bundle together multiple employers, the first one being just any, any public entity in the state, the second, you know, specific two counties. It is a widely assumed, assumed, it is widely assumed that a larger group of people in and of itself gets you the economies of scale to get better insurance rates. That may be true, but not necessarily, because if you're bundling together a whole bunch of high utilizing unhealthy people, doesn't matter how big that group is, you're still going to have potentially out-of-control healthcare costs. So, the pros, yeah, maybe we could get some economies of scale, maybe we could get some better rates, just looking at the underlying rates by joining one of those pools. The cons, you really have no ability to negotiate on your own behalf. Each year at renewal time, PEB or the Washington County Insurance Fund says, "Here are the rates that we have negotiated for you. Here are the plans that you have to select from." So, your options are going to be somewhat limited. Again, that's not to say that might not ultimately be the path you want to go down, just understand it's not necessarily the silver bullet that it might be presented to be. I'm going to get through some of these kind of quick because I want to get to some, a little bit more meteor education on some of these other topics. I know there's been a lot of talk of the ICRA approach, Individual Coverage Health Reimbursement Arrangement. I apologize, it's actually readable up there. So, some of the pros, and again, this is probably stuff you've already learned about, you know, the flexibility for employers, employees, rather, you know, they, you're no longer in the business of choosing an individual's health insurance. Health insurance is not a one-size-fits-all proposition. We all have different needs, different priorities. Some people would rather pay a little bit more to have better coverage. Some people would say, "Hey, give me the catastrophic policy, I'm very, I'm very healthy." You can do that to some extent, even in the context of a group plan, because you can have multiple options to choose from, but this takes it really out to the entire marketplace of individual policies. Cost control for employers, it's a defined contribution. You set the budget. And there's a lot of flexibility on how you can do that, especially as you look at different, different divisions, different bargaining units, different classifications of employees. You can get incredibly creative, but would encourage you to, to do so thoughtfully and carefully. There's a, a great line from Jurassic Park, you may remember, when they're, they're talking about bringing dinosaurs back to life. "We spent so much time thinking about whether or not we could, and no one bothered to ask whether or not we should." That's a dilemma that you can get into when we look at the extreme flexibility of a program like this. Moving on to the cons, you know, some of the, the ones I really want to highlight that I've, I've done in red. With, with freedom comes free doom. People can choose their own coverage, what kind of coverage are they going to choose? They run the risk of, of a, a lower price point and being underinsured, and that can create a whole slew of additional stresses that they have ultimately inflicted on themselves. In my mind, the biggest downside of this approach is you are beholden to the individual market, the individual health insurance market. Prior to Obamacare, the Affordable Care Act, we had a pretty good system here in Washington State. All the insurance companies were required to buy the, to play by the same set of rules in, in underwriting and deciding whether or not to accept someone applying for insurance. There was about a 30-page health questionnaire that you filled out, and everything you checked yes to had a point score attached to it, and as long as your point score was below a certain threshold, insurance companies were required to accept your application and insure you. And if you were above that threshold, you then go to the Washington State High Risk Pool, that we all pay, still to this day, a small premium tax as part of our insurance premium to fund that high-risk pool. And those, that coverage was a little bit more expensive for, for someone to go by, but it was much, much better coverage. They usually ended up ahead. Well, the Affordable Care Act, Obamacare, got rid of that entire model. Now, during open enrollment every year, anyone can go to the exchange and get a policy. We'll set aside whether or not they're going to get subsidies for that policy. From an underwriting standpoint, that's a bit scary for insurance companies. You know, if the exchange opens up on December 1st, someone could have a catastrophic diagnosis on November 30th, go get a policy effective January 1st, and pay the exact same price as someone who's been perfectly healthy their whole life. Go get the treatment they need for five, six, seven, eight months, drop the policy. The insurance companies taken on hundreds of thousands of dollars of claims, collected this much premium. Essentially, the individual market in Washington State has become the de facto high-risk pool. Prior to Obamacare, it was generally a little bit less expensive to get an individual policy than group policies, and that has completely flipped. And we generally see higher increases and more volatility in the individual marketplace. So, you might go into a program like this thinking, "Hey, we're, we're being very generous with our contribution, they should be able to get whatever policy they want." But then what happens when next year, all those policies go up 10, 15, 20%? We're basically on the same merry-go-round, we just have a different funding mechanism and a different insurance vehicle to get us there. That's not even the biggest challenge, though. The biggest challenge is all the individual policies in Washington State are either HMO plans or what are called EPO plans, Exclusive Provider Networks. There is no provider network outside of the state or the region, if it's a regional carrier. So, if someone's on vacation in Disney World and, you know, kid breaks their leg, there's no coverage there. It's all out of network. That's perhaps not a real great example, because there are some laws with emergency care, it's still quite a mess. Maybe perhaps a better example could be someone has a diagnosis with a very, very rare form of cancer, and the one specialist in the one hospital that is the expert in, in this form of, of cancer is in Houston, Texas. Sorry, there's no coverage for that. So, that's where this gets a little bit scary for me, is, is the network access point. So, you really have to weigh, you know, the pros and cons in determining if this is a good path to go down.
What about out of country?
Oh, out of country is a little bit different, and this is the same for all, all health insurance. Generally, what you have to do is you've got to pay for that on your credit card. And when you get back, we'll, we'll, we'll help you file the claim manually and, and get reimbursed, whatever a usual customary reimbursement is for those services. We always encourage people, if you're going to spend any appreciable time out of country, get a specific travel health insurance policy. They're very inexpensive, but protect against that. So, is it sustainable? Short-term, maybe. You know, given what you're contributing towards health insurance per employee right now, you might give yourself a, a three-to-five-year window before you really start bumping up against the inflationary costs of the individual health insurance market. But long-term, I don't really think it is because of what I just described. And you also have to benchmark a minimum contribution at a certain level for an ICRA to be compliant with the Affordable Care Act and avoid the Obamacare fines. And as the cost of the individual policies go up over time, that's going to have to go up as well. So, again, long, short-term, maybe, long-term, my personal opinion is you're, you're really just getting off of one merry-go-round onto another merry-go-round. It's potentially spinning faster. So, do so very judiciously when it comes to the ICRA. I meant to mention, please stop, ask questions as we go. Okay? Fully insured group coverage, this is where you've been for the last, I think it's 14 or 15 years, whenever it was that, that the, the prior county's program that you participated in went under. These are generally going to be the easiest path forward for you. They're all governed by either Washington State law or Obamacare in terms of what has to be covered by those plans. You're large enough to be what's called experience-rated. That means that the risk factors and the claims within your population are going to determine what your rates are going every 12 months, right? So, you might have good years and get a, a low renewal, you might have a catastrophic year, and you're going to have a catastrophic renewal. So, really what you're doing is you're, you're looking at this 12 months at a time. What's the best carrier for the next 12 months? What are the best programs for the next 12 months? And we'll deal with next year when it comes. Drives me crazy, because the insurance industry has kind of conditioned us to view this dilemma this way, rather than looking at a, a three-to-five-year plan to rein in costs. And, you know, we're going to be limited to the carriers that are either domiciled in Washington State or filed and approved by our state insurance commissioner. This list has grown since I've been in this profession to include some of the more national You don't want to be what I call a carrier hopper, chasing the best rate from one year to the next. We really caution our clients against that. Really try to, to work with your carrier to get the best possible renewal until you just know it's time to go to market. Because when you hop from one carrier to the next, chasing that lowest rate, when it is time to go to market, you're not going to get all the carriers to put their best foot forward to really try to earn your business for that long-term. You know, we see clients do this, they chase the lowest rate, and, and long-term, it probably punishes them. And we've got some tools that I'll talk about that are applicable to self-insured and fully insured to help hold the carrier's feet to the fire, to make sure you're getting what I would call a fair renewal. We'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute. So, is this approach sustainable? Well, what does history show us? I remember when I was brand-new in this profession, I was aghast that it cost your entire family like $650 a month, and that deductible was so high at 500 bucks. My goodness, who can afford that? Right? Now, we have clients where the, the rate for the full family is north of $3,000 a month. And, and to get it down to $3,000 a month, we're talking three, four, $5,000 deductibles. So, I'm a bit cynical when it comes to the insurance company's lip service on cost containment. Every one of those insurance companies will look you in the eye and say, "Look, we've been operating at the same 1.5% to 2.5% net profit margin for the last 40 years." Okay? But we're talking about exponential growth in top-line revenue, so that 1% or 2% margin also has had that exponential growth. So, I spend a, a good majority of my time battling with underwriters to really beat them down to what I would call a fair renewal. And again, we'll talk about how we do that. I've already talked about, you know, don't be a carrier hopper. And actually, I have it on this slide. There's an outside, even though we have internal actuaries that help us with this process, we also use Milliman. Milliman is one of the largest actuarial firms in the world. They actually write the underwriting modules for the insurance companies. So, they do an evaluation for us of clients your size that give us a good look, is this a fair renewal? So, if Primera Blue Cross comes in at a 12% renewal, Milliman gets all the data, runs it through all their actuarial tools, and said, "Actually, fair is probably 6%." Great, go back to the carrier, you need to give us 6, or we're going to market. And we send that same report to all the other carriers, and they know if you want to have a shot at this business, you need to hit 6 or better. So, it's a pretty darn powerful tool to keep them honest in their renewals. Risk management, used to be called wellness, and I use the air fingers quote purposely, I hate the term wellness, because it's a bit of a buzzword, I call it risk management. When you're self-insured or when you're experience-rated, every employee and their dependent who is on the plan is a risk to the future cost on that plan. What are we doing to promote a culture of good health? What kind of tools are we bringing to the table to help them make good decisions when it comes to their own healthcare? That's risk management that works. And we could spend hours just talking about that piece, but we'll, we'll save that for a, a future presentation, if you invite me back to do so. Let's move on to self-insurance. Most people don't realize that the vast majority of the population is actually covered on a self-insured health plan. 65% thereabout, and that number has held pretty steady for most of my career, mostly because you've got pretty much all large employers. Once you get over 5, 6, 700 employers, that, that moves to the 90, 95% of those employers are self-insured. It's very, very common. Why do they do this? Well, because we're, we're essentially taking the profit motive away from the insurance game, right? We're, we're going to hire an administrator to process claims for us, we're going to rent a provider network, and, so that we get the network discounts, and we're just going to pay the claims as they come in. It also allows for much, much more creativity in plan design and in the cost containment component of this. So, in my time working at Lord's Hospital, this was kind of my claim to fame back in the day, when I was young in this profession, we brought some pretty cool programs, some risk management, into their self-insured health plan. They were on a 15% trend line for the prior eight or 10 years, meaning that was their average increase, 15% per year. The tools that we brought into place to help mitigate the, the cost of claims and help their employees be better consumers of healthcare, took them from a 15% trend to 1% to flat to negative 1 in three consecutive years. And a lot of those tools that we used back then still use that example as case studies, and this was 2007 that that program went live, and I still see... And I still see data from Lord's Hospital and the success when they market their programs today. Another approach that I have been really chomping at the bit to get going here in the tri-cities is working with some of our local providers. And I think public entities are a perfect fit for this to negotiate contracts directly with those providers, directly with those hospitals that are deeper discounts than even the best of the best PPO discounts in the marketplace. And the way we do that, and we've had conversations with Lord's over the years, with Trios, you know, they're both part of LifePoint Health. Say, okay, can you help us craft a plan design that says, if, let's just say Franklin County adopts this approach, if a Franklin County employee utilizes services at your facility, can you give us a discount that beats Blue Cross by 15, 20%? Then we're going to drive volume to your facilities. And then we create the plan design that says to your employees, hey, if you utilize Lord's or Trios or whoever's part of this, your deductible is going to go, going to get cut in half. Potentially, there's another saving to say, hey, your deductible is going to be zero if you go here. Because we're going to save so much more on the claim cost on the backend that it's well worth it. And that's how we create that incentive to steer your population to providers that we can partner with to give you a better deal. Those are the kinds of things you can do in the context of a self-insured plan. You'll notice we're not going to put a single spreadsheet up on the screen because they're really meaningless at this point. Because your renewal is too far away, we need a bit more education before any of those numbers on the page even really makes sense to you. Which is kind of what I want to get into with the next slides. Self-insured plans have two parts, the fixed costs and the variable costs. The fixed costs, the cost for the third-party administrator who processes your claims, the network. There are some fees and taxes. And the largest part of your fixed cost is your stop-loss insurance, which protects the plan against high-cost claims at the individual level and aggregate claims as a group. And then the variable costs are whatever the claims are. A lot of people in my shoes will say something to you that I think is nonsense. They'll say, we're going to focus on the fixed costs, getting those as low as possible, beating down the stop-loss insurance, beating down the third-party administrator, because at the end of the day, the claims are the claims. That's their way of saying, we have no ability to control costs on your claims, which I think is not true. Because we've proven that we can impact that, okay? The stop-loss, I think this is the next slide, is also broken into two parts. Like I mentioned, the specific stop-loss insurance, which looks at the individual claimant and sets a maximum that your plan would pay towards any individual's claims. I've got a graph that's going to go up next, is going to make this make a lot more sense. And then what we call aggregate coverage, which looks at the claims for the entire covered population. So you know what the maximum claim cost is every single plan year. So we look at it this way. You know what your minimum cost is going to be for the plan, and that's your fixed costs. Because you're going to pay per employee per month, the same rate for your stop-loss insurance, your third-party administrator, et cetera. And we know what your maximum cost is for every plan year. That's the fixed cost plus whatever that maximum claim number is. And your actual cost is going to be somewhere between those two, okay? So the graph that I like to use that explains the way stop-loss insurance works looks like this. On the left side, the left axis, we have, we're measuring individual claims. And so for this example, we're saying your deductible on your stop-loss policy is $100,000. The county pays the first $100,000 of any individual employee's medical claims. Then you're insuring above that. They could have millions of dollars' worth of claims. You're only on the hook for the first $100,000 in this example. Which for a group your size, that's probably an appropriate deductible for your stop-loss coverage. You can squish that down, but then your stop-loss insurance cost is going to go up. So it's kind of a bit of a balancing act. Now on the bottom line, we're looking at the group claims that go throughout the whole year. And let's say the underwriter looks at your group and says, hey, for this group, they're going to have $1 million worth of claims. I like round numbers for this example. We're going to insure them at 125% of those expected claims. So they're going to set your maximum claims at 125, $1,250,000. So if for your entire group for the year, your claims exceed that number, that's your maximum cost. That's why stop-loss wraps around your plan. It wraps around the volatility of the individual claim and it wraps around the aggregate so that you're protected. Again, you know, it allows you to set your budget knowing this is the most our self-insured plan is going to cost us for this year. So that, kind of that medium blue, that risk corridor is the difference between your expected claims and what those maximum claims are. So you want to be reserving those dollars just in case those maximum claims hit. In a traditional self-insured structure where you're just paying claims as you go. So that's stop-loss. So is it sustainable? So in my mind, this is where we have the most bang for our buck when it comes to the risk management tools that we can bring to bear and gives you the best path forward towards sustainability. In my mind, that is using traditional risk management tools and programs and really hitting the local provider community. I know a few people in the community. A lot of them are my clients on the board at the hospital here. All of whom have said, yeah, we would entertain structures like this. The member experience, your employees, their families, it's going to be just like it is now with Blue Cross. You can even get Primera to be your third-party administrator. And really, their experience is no different. They go to the doctor, they give their card, they pay their copays or deductibles, et cetera. It also allows us to look at international sourcing of pharmaceuticals. It drives me, again, we could spend a whole hour on the shell game that is pharmaceuticals in this country. You know, we've got medications that are invented here, manufactured here, sold to other countries and sold back to the United States for 50% cheaper than we can go get them through Walgreens or Rite Aid or Costco. So we've got several programs that we bolt onto our self-insured clients where we go source them internationally and get them mailed and save a tremendous amount of claims dollars on pharmacy. When I was a baby in the business, if we had a client that was spending 10% of their total spend on pharmacy, if you looked at a pie, 10% of that was pharmacy, woo, they're running kind of hot on the pharmacy. We've got to figure out what's going on. We've got many clients that spend more than 50% of their healthcare is just on the pharmacy piece. It's a huge problem. And again, could spend hours, could write a book on the sins of the pharmaceutical industry in this country. Pharmacy rebates, this is a whole other part of this. When you're self-insured, you get those rebates back to you. This is a huge profit center for insurance companies. There's a reason certain medications are on the formulary. They're the preferred brands versus the non-preferred brands. By and large, it has to do with the rebates. You know, the pharmaceutical manufacturers say, hey, if you put our drug on your formulary as a preferred brand, we're going to give you X% of the sales as a rebate around the back door. When you're fully insured, do you get the benefit of that? No. It's a profit center for them. This was probably seven, eight years ago when we first started to see the hepatitis C medications hit the market. You know, $100,000. It cures hepatitis C. It's a miraculous drug. One of the large pharmacy benefit management companies cut a deal with one of the large insurance companies where that included a 50% rebate. So your plan bears the cost of $100,000 claim. The insurance company gets a $50,000 kickback every time your members take that medication and you get zero benefit of it. This is why I have gray hair, whatever's left of it, dealing with these kinds of things. So in my mind, the creativity that we can bring to the plan is almost boundless. There's one program that we started utilizing a couple of years ago. It's a carrier, health insurance company-driven program. I thought it was very, very innovative. Every provider is ranked a tier one, a tier two, or a tier three based on their cost, their score on health grades, you know, how they're rated by their patients and how effective they are as providers. Tier-one providers being the lowest-cost, most effective providers. And there was a copay differential based on if you saw a tier one, a tier two, or tier three. So then it's a way of incentivizing through money your employees to go to those highest-performing, lowest-cost providers. And that's everything from an office visit to colonoscopies and mammograms, to hospital stays. It was very, very innovative. You can do that on the self-insured. You can't do it in the fully insured. The cons, to be very frank about it, there's going to be a learning curve administratively moving to a plan like this. There's going to be potential volatility in claims from month to month. There are some things we can do on the stop-loss side to take that annual aggregate number and divide it equally into 12 so that you know this is your maximum claims per month. Some people view that as pro. Hey, you're not paying a whole bunch of extra money in months that you don't have claims. So in my mind, those are the two biggest changes that you'd have to adjust to. Level-funded is a different flavor of self-insurance. It looks and feels like a fully insured plan. You pay the same rate per employee, per employee spouse, per family, et cetera, every month for who's enrolled. A portion of that is divided up to pay the administrative costs. A portion of that goes down into what we call your claim bucket, out of which claims are paid. And if you have a good year and there's money left over in that claim bucket, these are largely driven by the insurance companies. Primera has their version called Optiflex. United Healthcare is big into this. Cigna is big into this. So let's say you get to the end of the plan year and there's a couple hundred thousand dollars left in your claim bucket because you had a pretty good year. They'll send you half of it back and they'll retain the rest to pay for any claims that were incurred late in the year but not reported yet. So it's kind of the best of both worlds because you get the benefit of the good year, at least 50% of the benefit of the good year. But administratively, it looks and feels just like you're used to. You could flip the switch with, you know, your insurance company right now. I'm assuming you're not on a level-funded plan, but you might be to this at next renewal and it wouldn't really change anything administratively. So the pros, in a good year, you get some money back. The cons, you still don't have control over your rates from year to year. The carrier still gets to control that and they literally hit the reset button on you every year. So we have not seen much of a difference in trend increases in these types of plans versus fully insured plans. That's not to say they're not good and beneficial because you still get some rebates, rebate's not the right word. You get refunded unused claims dollars that you can then, you know, make the argument, well, you are impacting cost because fully insured, that money's just out the door. The insurance company keeps it, right? That's their profit. At least you're getting some of that back. So we still, I probably have two dozen clients in this structure with the insurance companies. Potentially more sustainable because of the dynamic I just talked about, but the carriers still stack the deck in their favor. Insurance companies are not going to lose money over time, right? They're either going to want a big increase next year because you had more claims than premium than you paid or they'll still try to run you up a little bit every year to stay ahead of that curve, okay? And you don't have the same flexibility as a traditional self-insured plan because it's the carriers that develop these plans, they set the rules. You can't go negotiate with local providers because, you know, Primera Blue Cross, great insurance company. Their biggest feather in their cap is the discounts that they have at providers. That's what's saving you money. So they're not going to allow you to go outside and negotiate discounts outside of their network to the benefit of your plan, if they're the administrator on the plan. So years ago, my team, we built our own level-funded plan because we wanted to beat the carriers at their own game using traditional stop-loss contracts and just funding to 125% of expected claims. And formulating our own level-funded equivalent premium rate so that it still looks and feels just like a fully insured plan. You pay the same amount per employee each month. We had to have a couple of components to pull this off. We had to have our own combined billing platform that could collect that fully insured equivalent premium and slice it and dice it on the backend to send the third-party administrator their fees, send the stop-loss carrier their fees, set up a trust account out of which the claims are paid. The biggest difference in this model is when you have a good year, the sponsoring employer owns 100% of that reserve. So it's not a refund of half of it. You keep all of it. Now, our strong recommendation is keep it in the claim account because we can use that to smooth out increases over time and take the catastrophic renewal out of play. We went live with this program, I think we're in our sixth year. So this bottom bullet point, the average rate increase within, you know, my clients that have chosen this product is less than 1% per year over the last six years. We've got clients here locally that adopted this program that have over $1 million just sitting in reserve. So when the fixed costs go up a little bit, stop-loss premium goes up a little bit, we can keep their rates identical. Because we can start funding away from the maximum claim cost knowing that even if they hit it, well, we've got money in reserve to pay those claims. So again, we just wanted to beat the carriers at their own games and have the flexibility in risk management and plan design that you get in a fully insured, excuse me, in a traditional self-insured plan and still have the benefit of a level-funded feel that's much easier administratively to operate. So is this sustainable? I would just point to the groups that, you know, several of whom here are local that we'd be happy to have you talk to, to get their impression of it that have had tremendous success and they are so far ahead of the rest of the market. We get asked by the insurance companies all the time, hey, we haven't seen a request for bid on this group in five years. Can we bring them a proposal to look at going back fully insured? Sure, you bet. There's no harm in doing that. They can't get within 30 or 40% of what those clients are being billed because we stopped trend in its tracks five years ago. So those are the kind of things that I get excited about pursuing. And it also gets us away from this 12-month renewal cycle and really thinking strategically long-term. How do we rein in this out-of-control cost on this program? So tried to get through that as quickly as I could. Interestingly enough, one of my clients is the Oregon Coast Aquarium in Newport. And I go there today for their open enrollment meetings that start tomorrow, so I got a little bit of a drive ahead of me this afternoon. They went through the progression that might end ultimately be what we would recommend you do to go from fully insured, let's tweak your plan design fully insured, put in place an HRA, a health reimbursement arrangement, much, much higher deductibles and that's kind of a small self-insured layer in the context of a fully insured plan. And then let's flip the switch to a carrier-based, level-funded plan. Then let's flip the switch to our non-carrier-based, level-funded plan and startlingly move towards more traditional self-insurance. Again, it's that three-to-five-year incremental approach, so we're not ripping the Band-Aid off hoping we don't hemorrhage out because we've made too much of a change too quickly. So the aquarium, they did that several years ago. We're flipping the switch this year to our level-funded plan. Yeah, question?
Mr. Danzel.
One of the things that will make that somewhat difficult in this setting is that the board changes and you can't really commit one board to a decision for the next board.
For sure, yeah.
So with that in mind, and not probably being able to do five-year outlook, what do you recommend there? And then number two on your blended product, do you have a hard time building reserves as much as you do a fully self-insured?
No, it's actually a bit easier because we are deliberately funding all the way to the maximum claims. So we're relying on the underwriters of the stop-loss carrier to do all the analysis and say, here's what we expect the claims to be for this 12 months. And we're going to fund to 125% of that number. So if they come in as expected, we've got a 25% reserve we built in the first year. If they come in better, boy, that's an even bigger number. We've had a couple of clients that expected claims was so much lower. I mean, they could have reduced their rates, their fully insured equivalent rates by 10% and still funded to the max. And we said, hey, don't reduce them 10%. Give yourself a 0% increase through all that extra into reserve. And now in year one, you've guaranteed you funded more than the worst-case scenario. Even if you hit the worst-case scenario, you're still going to have a reserve there. So it's really about being strategic. I appreciate your point, yeah, that elections happen, board can change. So that, I'm glad you mentioned that because that would be a good reason if we do get some really good proposals on some of these to maybe accelerate that a little bit quicker and not baby-step our way into it. Knowing that we've got the safeguards, the guardrails to keep the thing from ever blowing up. And we haven't, nor am I going to in this setting because my comp- And we haven't, nor am I going to in this setting because my competition gets to watch this video and see what I've said. We haven't even really talked about the secret sauce, the programs that really stopped the trend in its tracks. So, kind of my last slide, I would encourage you all to really be thinking about the sustainability question. You know, what's going to get us on the best path of sustainability? You know, good governance looks at the long-term, not the 12-month. I think some of the problems that you all are grappling with fixing now are a result of those short-term decisions rather than really looking strategically long-term. And then was kind of already mentioned, you know, in my view, your next decision point is which horse do you hitch your wagon to? You know, you're interviewing some good firms. I just think my approach is a little bit different in how we tackle this problem, and I hope that when you get through the process, you'll see that too because I'm eager to get started on helping you all discern what really is the best path forward. So, with that...
Questions, commissioners?
I'm thankful that there are people that have talents outside of mine.
You haven't heard me play the drums yet. That's my real talent.
That's a lot of information. It's been helpful to hear your presentation, hear the presentations last week and to start to learn. It's a drinking from a fire hose is kind of the tired cliche comment is, but yeah, there's truly a lot of options and we need to find a good option for Franklin County.
So, I have a couple questions. One of the things that's hurting our county the most is the policy that we went into before any of us were commissioners, and that is to pay our, some of our clients cash instead of taking our insurance plan or VIBA. If we go with you, how do we get away from that? Because at this point in time, it's costing our county around 2.5 million a year. This is what's hurting us.
It is. There's no question about it.
So, how do we get away from that?
So, either rip the Band-Aid off and deal with the fallout with the challenges internally and say, look, this is done, and we can provide you with copious amounts of data that points to that being outside the norm of what employers do.
But we're dealing with negotiations and that's not easily done. So, we can talk offline more about this. Number two, under your self-insured policy, if it's outside of the realm of lords, how do we cover it?
Oh, we utilize any number of preferred provider networks.
Yeah, I'm saying like it's a brain tumor or it's something outside of their norm of, but you have means of covering it.
Oh, absolutely. We, you know, the most common one in Northwest is the First Choice Network.
Okay.
We can also access the Cigna Network, the Aetna Network. Those are national carriers. Someone has to go, like I mentioned, the cancer doc in Houston, it's going to be a network.
That's right. That was one of my other...
Good question.
Last question is, we have a lot of people in the courthouse that have pretty high substantial VIBA contributions collected over the years. How do they use that? Because that's what it was put for, was medical needs.
Yeah, I'm going to have to do a little research on that. I've got some good resources here locally that can help craft a plan for that. I would think off the cuff, you know, if the cost of coverage exceeds, like if they're enrolling their whole family, whatever the contribution ends up being, they could still spend that money down.
Yes.
To me, that's the most straightforward approach. I know what those contributions have been. I know that there are probably people who've been employees in the county for a long time that couldn't spend that money down for the rest of their life.
Yes, there is. There's very substantial collections here. So, those were my questions, and I thank you Matt very much, and I was willing to entertain you a long time ago, but I wasn't, I didn't have the consensus of the board because they were all getting cash in lieu of, and they wanted their cash, so.
Yep, I remember that.
I thank you so much.
Can I give one more shameless plug? And this is to our new county administrator.
Absolutely.
The one thing I didn't mention, I've also been very, very active in the Pasco Kiwanis Club for most of my adult life, and there's a lot of precedent. And really, this would go for any of you as well. Several prior commissioners and county administrators have been part of our club. So, as you're new to the area, it'd be a great way. Anytime you want to come to lunch, you just hit me up.
I am a member in good standing of Kiwanis.
Oh, yes.
I will be there.
I'm glad to hear that because I know the sheriff left after the end of the meeting. I was going to try to hit you before he tried to rope you into his Rotary Club, so.
[laughing]
All right. Thank you all very much.
That has been very educational. Thank you very much for your presentation.
Happy to be here. Thank you all.
Thank you. Okay, next on the workshop is item number two by Kenny, or no, excuse me, I'm on the wrong page here. It is OPD positions discussed by Ms. Wilder.
Good morning. Give me just a second. I actually have a presentation.
And while you're waiting there, Teresa, I know we had a department head elected a meeting at 12. Mr. Danzel, do we want to postpone that or do we want to just delay it until we're done here or?
That's up to you, Mr. Chairman, but whatever you...
I think it's important that we have it. So, if they're out there listening, we will reschedule it for 12:30 unless this goes longer than that.
Yeah.
At 1:00 or sooner.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Ms. Wilder, are you ready?
I think I'm ready, yes.
Okay.
So, commissioners, one of the last conversations I had with Eric Johnson before he left was to bring this topic of conversation up to you in regards to the Office of Public Defense and getting it more in line really with the PA's office as far as some of the salaries. So, that is what this topic is about today. I do have some history for you. So, this would be the who of the who, the how, the why, and the how.
Ms. Wilder, before we get started, are we analyzing this from previous, the drop of a position and the raise of salaries, or are we going off of that?
I guess I'm not understanding your question.
We dropped a position in the PA's office to raise salaries. Are we going off of that action or are we going off of previous to that action?
Um...
This is the OPD.
I know, I know. She's going off of PA positions, right?
So, the resolution that you approved last week, the week before, where there would be the July 1st increase to the matrix for the PA positions, the chief's positions, that we're going off of? I know at that point you requested that they drop a position.
Yes.
And I will go over with some of the history of the positions in the OPD office.
Okay.
But yes, it's in regards to that resolution and that request from you.
That's what I was afraid of. Okay.
Sorry, so to go back, so the, from 2016 to 2024, the OPD manager was a contracted position. The salary compensation for that contractor, because it was a contract, was obviously not on our salary matrix. That position was vacated in August 24, in which case it was filled with an interim up until the end of last month. And then, but when it was filled in August, the salary compensation needed to be figured out, which was done so. So, for 2025, the OPD manager was positioned, was created, adopted, and approved with the adoption of the budget for 2025. Josh Cuevas, who was the interim at the time, presented to you and argued why the position should be budgeted at grade 23 step 7, and then, of course, there's the 3% COLA from the budgeted funds that would have to be considered. The other positions within the department that we're concerned about is from, on November 21st of 2021, a PDC or Public Defense, well, it's Attorney actually, should we see. I think it was Counselors on my job descriptions. Anyway, for Superior Court, the position was created, it was a removal of a contractor and became a full-time employee, and was filled from January of 2022 to May of 2023 and was at a grade 20. Then in March of '23, the District Court or the PD, Public Defense Council I, position was created, again, removing a contracted position and making it a full-time employee. At that time, it was a, could be a Rule 9, so it was a grade 17, and then was filled in June of 2023 by resolution and step and grade. So, these positions at the time, both the 20 and the 17, fell in line with that were the comparable positions in the PA's office for the Rule 9 and for the DPA 2s. June of '23, a resolution for the PA to hire at a grade 20 or 21 came in place. In September of '23, the resolution for OPD to hire at a grade 20 or 21 also took place, and that removed that grade 17 from those two positions. So, at this point, OPD has a contractor for an OPD manager, this would be for '23, and has two Attorney positions, one for Superior Court, one for District Court, all matching up. And if I remember right, part of the argument for having the grade 20 or 21 was definitely that PA's office had a mass exodus of attorneys. Some of them had gone to the defense side. The one employer that they got to fill for the District Court was, there was a step increase requested for that, but again, it all fell together. So, it's keeping the two departments working together for the same compensation. And then for 2024, resolution removed the PDC 2 position, that Superior Court position, and returned it to a contractor. This is because they could not fill the position. They were not getting candidates for it, and they had a need for cases to be covered. And then Jennifer can jump in at any time if I'm overspeaking my knowledge or misspeaking of my knowledge of the situation. January 2025, the OPD manager and PDC 1 positions have both been vacant. They've been vacant this entire year. Here's the why. Both OPD and the PA's office have difficulties in recruiting, attracting candidates, retaining employees, and competitive salaries for attorneys. Keeping both the OPD and the PA's office consistent with each other is an imperative for a fully operational justice system. I'm not making light of it, but a good reference, same game, different teams. So, here's kind of the how, and this gets into a little bit, Commissioner Didier, of your question. So, the OPD manager, and there's going to be several, a couple slides with a lot of numbers. So, the budgeted funds for the OPD managers, grade 23 step 7, which you can see is at 159,000 plus, with a 3% COLA, it brought it up to 164,590. The Chief DPA, with the new approval, took that position starting July 1st to the 181,444 and change. The difference between those two, and this is quick math, is to not get into the nitty-gritty of all the taxes and stuff, is a difference of 21,661. That is simply taking the 181s and subtracting the 159. On the other side of the screen, the DPC position for District Court, same kind of formula, the funds for grade 20 step 7, which is what it's currently budgeted at, 120,000. The 3% COLA would bring it up to 123,600. The DPA 2 position, which it's comparable to for the PA's office, again, with a new approved increase, which would be effective July 1st, brings that up to 136,11. That is also step 7 because currently for OPD, it's budgeted at step 7. I left it at the same step. The difference being the almost $16,000. Any questions on that so far? No? Okay. So, here's just a little bit more information on it. So, this is a budgeted funds with the COLA aspect because that COLA aspect could be absorbed by the department as it was requested for each department for this year. So, the COLA salary is 164,590 for, I'm on the OPD manager's side. The requested increase to go up to the 181,444, a difference of being the $16,000. The budgeted savings, again, back to the 150 from before. It's for two months, but it's been, that's all I did the calculation for. We are into month three of the vacancy for that position, but for two months, it's $26,000 savings so far this year. The savings, so including the COLA and including the increase up to the 181, you would still for the two months have a savings of almost $10,000 for that position.
But I might just add, that's for this year. Next year's would be a new budget.
It would be.
And the costs are going to go up.
I will get to it.
Okay.
It's on here, too.
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome. So, PDC on the other side, same sort of math. The COLA salary is a 123. Requested increase would be the 136, difference of 12,000. Budgeted savings, again, just the two months, it's been vacant all year, is a 20,000, but the savings with the COLA and the increase is just under 8,000. So, that would be for this year, and as Commissioner Didier, you just mentioned. So, next year, this would be my estimate because it would roll over. If you took the funds mentioned here of these savings, the 9,000, almost 10,000 and almost 8,000, and did roll them over into the OPD salaries for next year, as was mentioned with the PA's office, you were still actually going to see a savings. Again, this is just really quick math. The OPD manager would stay at that salary of the 181 because it's not, there's no step to it. It was in line with the COLAs for the PAs. This would be similar in situation. But I just estimated a 3% COLA for next year, so, which is an additional $5,000. So, the 26,000, the 2026 salary with an estimated 3% is, we're looking at 186,888. With the rollover funds of $9,000, with the two-month calculation, your savings is still $4,000 for next year. So, really with the rollover funds, you would still see for the two years, you would still remain a savings. Now, as, I didn't go beyond that. I didn't go into 2027 and what that looked like, and obviously, these numbers, if you continue to do that, those numbers of savings would start to shrink.
But you didn't also go over if they still, under all these increases, don't fill the position, those monies accumulate if they don't fill those positions, even with the increase.
That accumulate is for savings or costs?
Savings.
It does, and that's why I'm pointing out the fact that I only did the two-month calculation for this year, and we are into March.
Right.
The other thing I would like to add is for the OPD office, both the OPD manager and the District Court position have been opened for recruitment.
Yep.
The prime candidate for the OPD manager did turn down the job. It was about a $60,000 decrease. This would not make up for a $60,000 decrease at all, but do feel it would bring some more viable candidates to the recruitment. The District Court position, I don't even know if you had one viable candidate.
I mean, not really. There, it was, it was very small pickings.
And there was very, I think even there was people who applied who don't have an...
Didn't even have a lot of green.
Yeah. They don't have a lot of green. There's no bar license.
Well, you can get those out of a Cracker Jack box now, right?
Do they still sell Cracker Jacks? So, we're, you know, the idea would be to, oh, and then, so the interim OPD manager had, was able to fill the need with contractors, so we did close down that recruitment, and it would be up for the new OPD manager to decide if that is going to stay sustainable for the contracted or if they need to backfill and fill this in-house position. So, yes, you are correct. For as long as it stays vacant, that those salary, those savings will be for the county. And then what we're looking for is to hopefully get your support in this, and so we can bring back a resolution in the next few weeks at most, to present a resolution, to have that increase to match what the PA's office did, but we would be looking for more of an immediate, not a July 1st, because that's when we would want to open back up the OPD manager recruitment with the increased wages. So, if you have any questions...
Questions, commissioners?
The OPD manager, is that showing managerial dues only, or is that half a caseload, or what does that position cover?
So, the current job description does have a required caseload.
Half caseload.
Yeah, half caseload in it. There was direction given to actually remove that part, not because they couldn't take a caseload, but instead of requiring them to, it would allow them to but also not require that. So, the idea is still to have a licensed attorney fill that position on a regular basis, of which they would be taking caseload as well as doing the managerial.
Correct. We prefer more managerial side just because of the fact that there is a lot to focus on on the managerial side, and when you're taking a caseload... to focus on, on the managerial beside, side, and when you're taking a caseload, it does, I mean, you have to focus a lot on getting your cases taken care of and with your clients. But, um, so balancing both, um, is really hard, I mean, they don't, I can honestly say they haven't done that in Benton County. Um, you know, they have, they do have an attorney um, that does that part, and then they have the managerial that focuses on, you know, be, you go in front of the, um, the board or working with the PAs, working, you know, with county admin, um, you know, and, and keeping the, um, keeping the office running correctly. So, but.
And you requested action on these two positions. Does this take care of the, the shortfalls that you feel currently exist in the OPD's office? Or um, what, what is your feeling on that? Is this just step one and there's further action necessary shortly down the road?
I feel that getting, bringing this up, so we can get more candidates there, better qualified, I do believe that it would help take care of that. Um, I mean, when, when people were looking at the position before, at the, the current amount and that it was offered, it wasn't enticing them, um, they were looking elsewhere. So it was making it very hard to get the mo- more viable candidates.
The position of OPD manager, as I understand it, is approximately a half-time job. Um, I'm not prepared to support a full-time OPD manager that does not take some type of caseload. Um, it would be my recommendation that we ask our administrator to, to have a look at this and bring back a recommendation to us.
Mr. Danzel?
Yeah, I, certainly, we can do that. Um, I would, uh, I'm gonna need to do a little bit of background too, to go through and just see what, uh, what uh, has taken place and maybe have a conversation with Eric Johnson. Um, I have a couple of things I gotta call him about anyway.
Is he available?
Yeah, yeah, but we'll, I will certainly do that, and I'll get back together with Margot and, and we'll get something to you.
I, I don't know if this helps. Um, I, I do think that the partial, the, one of the interim could do a partial caseload, reduce it down, I think they felt it was capable to do. I think it depends on the person, I mean, we all have our manager, own management style. So yes, currently, the job description requires a partial caseload.
So while I appreciate your, your scenario there, we're bringing this up to, to full professional standards, and if we're going to provide a full professional, um, you know, standard position, it would be my expectation that that person can, can perform within that.
Makes sense.
Commissioner Mullin?
I, I concur with Mr. Bowman.
And I do too, and um, Jeff, I'd just like you to reiterate that every action has a domino effect, and this is the domino effect, and all we're doing is driving our costs up, we can't compete with these other counties. Uh, Benton County's paying two hundred and sixteen thousand for their manager, we can't afford that.
I, I just saw that in the paper yesterday. Um, we typically don't wade into these types of issues, I, I, there's prohibitions, I think, on the prosecutor's office getting involved directly in the compensation of, um.
I'm just asking you to tell him, warning him that when he keeps coming in, and, and is it gonna solve the situation? I don't think so. I think we have a shortage of lawyers, I think we can offer as much money as we want, but you're not gonna get him in here. Uh, this is a direct, uh, action by the state in all of our counties.
That all being said, I would just put it out there that I think I can see why maybe that office in particular doesn't take on cases. I, I think there's unique challenges, given their role. Um, ethical i- issues that could arise, given their role doling out contracts and administering those, and then having to interpret those when you're, it, it would just create, it could potentially create ethical problems if you're, uh, working under the same contracts that you interpret on behalf of the county.
Exactly.
Um, so, anyway.
Okay, so, Mr. Danzel? More work.
Absolutely, that's all right, that's what I'm here for, but we'll, we'll take a look at it, I'll go through and, uh, see what exactly, um, kind of the other folks are dealing with this throughout the state, and see if there's any, uh, out-of-the-box ideas. And then I'll get with Margot, we'll, uh, we'll get something to you soon. You bet.
And you're on the next item on the list, the matrix.
Thank you for your time on this, though, we at least wanted to get in front of you.
Well, I appreciate it, because, yeah, every action has a reaction, and it is obviously having a reaction, so, thank you.
Yep, absolutely, and I will just stay put. Teresa, I'm done with that, if you wanna shut it off, I appreciate it, thank you. I'm expecting you to do most of the talking, by the way. Um, the reason so forth, did, were you gonna announce it, or am I diving right into it?
I said matrix.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Matrix, you're up next.
Apparently was focused, hyper-focused on the computer. Uh, the reason that we're just in front of you today is, uh, we had heard a few comments be made, that there was some discussions about the Matrix, um, previous workshop. Um, we are, we being, Mackenzie and I, are looking at to what our comparables were, would be. Um, we have at least two viable ones from the consort study, and then she wants to get what, at least one more?
I wanna get at least one more, I'm working with Tony, our outside counsel, on comparables. We just need to be very careful about the ones that we choose, because that's generally what we also bring to union negotiations, and we don't wanna give our, you know, internal job analysis and give a comparable that is truly not a true comparable of the county. Uh, so I'm working with Tony to get a couple more, that we can just provide everybody in this process.
And then I do have a job analysis questionnaire that kind of stumbled across in our archives of our, uh, J-Drive, which we'll need to revamp, make sure it's good, but it is a job questionnaire that can be put out to the departments for their, um, employees to fill out, to more of what, what are they doing, how much time they're spending on it, things like that. So that if positions are reclassified, you have kind of more of that supporting documentation as well. So really, just to kind of see if there's more that, um, you are all wanting from us on this topic, or if there's any other more open discussion that we wanna have outside of our previous workshop.
Well, I'd just like to ask, Mr. Danzel, are you, uh, familiar with what we're doing here?
Uh, not completely, so I haven't come, I haven't seen the entirety of the work, but I've been brought up to speed to be able to speak to it, um, and, yeah, Margot had come in and just wanted to have a couple of discussions with the commissioners to see what you all were expecting.
Like I said, it was, Eric had made a couple of comments, and I thought, oh, I, are, you know, are you expecting more before we were, had delivered it? So it's really just to open that form of communication. Is, is there something that you're wanting from us a little bit sooner? Us to hold off on, are we still kind of status quo?
Commissioner?
So I had made a comment, um, I believe it was back at budgeting, um, kind of asking an open question is, is there a way for us to, to collect this information on an annual basis um, through processes that we already undertake, so that we can not have to go out and, and hire somebody to do a hundred and fifty thousand dollar study, but if we can collect this information through the normal course of work and, and have an understanding, so that we can, um, instead of doing one-offs, that we can have a consistency, you know, that we can develop that year after year, we have a, a, a clear understanding. So I have been working and, and trying to research some of the background. Um, I'll have to look, uh, I dug, I dug up a, a document, I believe it was from two thousand seventeen, I believe it's the one that you're referring to, that, uh, it's a pretty comprehensive document that, um, would be sent to every employee that would ask them to describe, um, it really walks them through, and I'll provide that to you, what their job descriptions are, how much time it takes, and it, and it really collects a, a, a great amount of information from every employee to describe that.
Does it, does it ask them what they did previously the day of the five?
I think we could probably easily add that to the list.
I think we should follow our president's lead.
I, I think that's a fascinating, um, I think there's two fascinating things about that. Number one, that, um, we haven't been doing that, number two, that people are resistant to answering that question.
Why?
I don't understand. We, we give a report, we give a report every week of, you know, things that we've been doing and, and, uh, and, uh, they're, they're, it's a pretty simple question, but, um, I believe one thing that we can do that is, that is very simple to do is do that, fill out that form and ask, what do you do for Franklin County, and really describe that. And, and I, I think that we're closer to having the information that we would like to have than we, than we think. And, uh, and so, not to give you more work to do, but I'll get you that document, and, and I think that it's something that, that, um, one, one thing that I, that we need to do is we need to develop a consistent process that we can address wage disparities, and, and because we all know the, the actions and the reactions when, when we, we make a wage adjustment. Um, there's several criteria that I think that, um, isn't always fully appreciated. Um, it is, it is different to fill one role as another. When you have a, one role that, that requires, um, you know, four to seven years of, of study and, 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 uh, that you can't, you know, fill, and other positions where that, that you don't have to have a college degree for. You're, you're not, you're not addressing the same issue in the same way. And so, um, I believe that we need to, it's gonna take some work, it's gonna take some time, but develop a process wherewith we can build in a consistency where that there, that it's not so difficult every time, and that there's, um, um, whiplash or backlash, or whatever you wanna call it, that happens almost every single time. And, and I believe that we go into this, um, faithfully and with the right intent. And so after the fact, we find out that everything that we did was wrong, apparently. And so, um, frankly, I'm getting a little bit weary of finding out after the fact that what, you know, the action that we took was quote-unquote wrong, and, uh, want to, want to serve the, the community and, and the people that work at Franklin County and believe that we should diligently, um, undertake a task wherewith we can do it consistently.
And in, in response to that, I, I agree, and I think that there are some people in other departments that are doing more than they're asked to do, above and beyond the call of duty, and I thank them for doing that. Because I know that with the tasks that some of these people are doing in other departments are deserving of more money. Because if their job description was written differently, they would be at a higher rate. But I thank them for doing the service of the county at their wage scale. And with that, I guess we will, uh, let you work with Margaret, keep it in-house, like, I agree with Mr. Bowman. I don't think we need to go out and spend a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of taxpayer money to figure this out again, we already did it once. And obviously, we don't have a clear picture right now.
We will certainly have something to you, I promise that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Danzel.
Are you gonna add that, that line to the list, what did you do last week?
So does that conclude this?
It does, thank you for your time, I much appreciate it.
Well, thank you, Margaret, and then, uh, with that, we open it up for public comment, is if there anybody for public com- comment, or anybody on the phone? Yeah, we, well, no, we got a closed session too, and then we got our department heads. I didn't forget.
I did say last week that self-insure is the way to go. You're on the right path, you're gonna save a lot of money, you're gonna have a consensus of employees that work together to keep their costs down. I will tell you, um, when we used the Etna network, the card looked exactly the same, um, and everything worked exactly the same at the doctor's office, but my deductible was three hundred per person in my household. And that was after Obamacare hit the market. This is the answer to Obamacare, so I know you have to wrap your mind around it differently, but I think the more you learn about it, the more you understand that you actually have direct control of those costs, direct incentive for these employees to save money and have lower, cuz when I was a single parent, I would take a seventy-dollar gap insurance from State Farm between jobs to make sure I'd cap off my liability if something happened. Now, you're paying the highest premium and you're paying a five thousand dollar deductible. It's insane, it's not really health insurance, it's gap insurance again. So I, I really encourage you on that, as far as the, um, um, conservancy, uh, water boards, I really encourage you to hop on that, stay on that. It was a pleasure to go with Darrell Olson and a contingency of local irrigators to Washington DC. We spoke directly with, um, Ryan Zinke's, uh, top attorneys, and they were, we were on the right path to get the exemption. Um, what's called the, before the God Squad is what it was called. But we just couldn't wake up all the stakeholders, the state had taken over the stakeholder, um, qualifications and made them theirs, basically, and got the answers they wanted, because they were already theirs. And it didn't help us, and I still think that the Snake River dams are at risk, I still want the ESA exemption. But, um, seeing ecology do this, they're one of the worst departments in this state, they have more employees, that's their biggest claim. And they had a filthy water situation right outside their back door in their own land. Um, so they're just not one of my favorite groups. So I encourage you to work with them closely and, um, to build those, those, um, letters and things that go higher up the, the lev- the la- the ladder to decision-makers, that's how you get it done. So thanks for the good work today, and thank you.
Anybody else for public comment? Hearing none, we will adjourn the workshop. We're gonna move into closed session for how long? We can still make that twelve, twelve-thirty mark, so send it out, we're gonna be meeting at twelve-thirty. Alrighty, so at this time, we'll go into closed session for approximately five minutes.